Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray heavily in Almighty Spirit. Bless everyone present tonight and give them your love, favor, and healing. Guide us as we consider the city's business agenda tonight. Remember the people of Ukraine and their fight for their freedom, protect the Americans being held by the Russian government, and bring them home soon. Give comfort for the people of Uvalde, Texas, as they deal with the losses from the recent shootings. Place your healing hands on them and give us the courage to directly address the issues dealing with gun violence. We ask for all of this in your holy name, and let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I continue, I've been notified that Councilman Fawcett is requested to participate virtually, and if that is the pleasure of council, a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Bennett?
I move that Councilmember Roger Fawcett be approved to participate electronically in today's regular session because he's unable to be present because of medical conditions.
Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second by Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
And I, City Attorney, I err, and I did not call for roll to begin with before I asked for that motion. Do I need to revert back to call for the roll, or we okay?
Now that Councilmember Fawcett has joined the meeting, you should do the roll.
So I did do it right. Okay, scared myself. All right, at this time, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Here.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Here.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Mayor Dooman?
Here. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of June the 15th, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore, be it resolved. City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, a motion is in order. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Move for approval.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion counsel from Vice Mayor Bennett and a second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next item is approval of the minutes from the December 15th, 2021 work session and regular meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
So moved.
Motion for approval, Councilman Williams and Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember William?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Move for approval.
Councilman Johnson?
Second.
A second from Councilman Johnson. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to Agenda Speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any Agenda Speakers at this time, and if so, please explain the time and system.
Each individual speaking on, under the agenda items, portion of the agenda will receive five minutes to address their comments to City Council. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, engage in personal attacks, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first Agenda Speaker this evening is Gary Crossfield, 2815 Godwin Boulevard, representing self regarding item number 15, an ordinance authorizing the city to participate in a firearms buyback program and destroy surrendered firearms.
Evening, Council. Evening, everybody. So I was a little bit behind the power curve on this because I've been busy and was out of town, so that's my fault. So when this got brought to my attention yesterday that this was on the agenda, I definitely wanted to find out some more stuff. So I did. Made a, made a couple phone calls to some members of City Council, trying to find out, what are we doing? What's our plan here, right? Are we just doing a buyback, or what? So, and that's where it really struck me that, A, we didn't have a plan. We really didn't know when this buyback was, where this buyback was, what are the rules and laws that's associated with transferring a firearm in the state of Virginia. Two years ago, July 1st, of two years ago, during the two A actions, Virginia started some new laws, and that we've been having to abide by these laws because they were voted on. And one of those is a transfer of firearms from individual to individual. So that brought my concern about how we are administering these buyback programs. During my conversation, we didn't even intend on, at the time, the police presence to be at the buyback program, which the rule states, and this is a quote from the Virginia State Law 18.2308, criminal history record check required for sale of firearms. No person shall sell a firearm for money, goods, service, or anything else of value unless has attained a verification from a licensed dealer in firearms that the transferred information and the proposed purchaser has been cleared on a criminal background check, and then it goes into all the state requirements. Now, there is a loop, not a loophole, there is a section down at the bottom, Section B1, which says the sale of firearm is authorized to a representative of the Commonwealth or any subdivision therefore as part of authorized voluntary buyback program. Okay, that's great. So, which means we have to have an authorized city locality Commonwealth, somebody has to be there. A civilian group cannot just take possession of these firearms, because if they do, also under this law, Section C and D, any person willfully intentionally selling firearms, that's a class one misdemeanor. The person getting the firearm is a class one misdemeanor. So we were going to do a buyback and break the law. For that time, we were going to look the other way and go, oh, it's okay for you to transfer these firearms and commit crimes. So, that's the laws on that. Now, there's also a law in Virginia that sets disposal of firearms required by the localities. We have to pass an ordinance for the city to play this game. That's what we're doing here tonight. Great. This bottom half of that ordinance also says there are certain firearms that we have to dispose of these firearms properly. You cannot just destroy them all. When a person is doing a buyback program under this law, if they give a written consent that that firearm is not to be destroyed, the locality has to offer that, there's a whole list here of the requirements that the city has to do to authorize that firearm for sale to gun dealers under public auction or sealed bids. One person has to do this. So I'm almost out of time, so I'm going to make this quick. The program sounds nice. Research shows buyback programs do not work. They do not stop gun crimes. They do not stop gun violence. It is a good, happy show that we did something, right? The people that are receiving these firearms, if we're going to get AR-15s and fully automatics, if somebody walks out and no questions asked, so I can walk up to the table, drop off a Glock 19 with a burp switch on it, which is an illegal, fully automatic weapon that's in the streets of Suffolk, and there's going to be no questions asked, somebody gives a stolen firearm. So all this, what I'm getting at, and then we say there's no city money? No. The efforts that the police department has to do, we are talking lots of man hours and work to possession of these weapons, transportation of these weapons, backgrounds of these weapons, clearing these weapons, destroying these weapons, and then, God forbid, if somebody doesn't want it, we are taxing a police department that is already roughly 35 personnel down and already working mandatory overtime. We want to stop crime? We want to stop gun crime? We want to stop gun violence? Let's do it. Let's do work groups. Let's go after store purchases. Let's stop criminals with crimes. Getting grandma's gun that's been in a closet for three, 10 years isn't going to stop the guns and the crime. Let's go do crime prevention. Let's stop gun crimes. Let's do police actions. I'm out of time, guys. I wish I had more. God, that was a quick five minutes. Thanks, everybody.
Next speaker is Miller Carey, 1002 MacArthur Drive, representing self regarding item 15, an ordinance authorizing the city to participate in a firearm buyback program and destroy surrendered firearms. Is Mr. Carey present? Our next and final speaker is Kelly Hengler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing the Cretenton Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League regarding item number eight, a resolution to endorse project applications under the Smart Scale Funding Project from Shoulders Hill Road widening two to four lanes, Phase Two, Shoulders Hill Road widening two to four lanes, Phase Three, Kings Highway Bridge replacement 30% design plan, and Bridge Road Route 17 and College Drive Route 135 left turn lane.
Good evening. It's only speaking to a portion of that. My name is Kelly Hengler. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Butler Barlow. So, the portion that I'm speaking to tonight is in regards, once again, about the Kings Highway Bridge replacement. The comments that have gone out and come back in regards to this item, overused, and please forgive me because I'm not quoting you, Councilmember, okay, is just, okay? This is not just placing it into the Smart Scale process. Again, what has just occurred, however, is that the property that this plan, which is not approved by the actual people, okay, to put and move that bridge interferes with one of the nation's longest standing trusts. That land trust began as King's Grant land, and not the type that the General Assembly felt that they needed to take after the Revolutionary War, because it was a personal gift of a parishioner at that vestry that gave that land, that King's Grant land, and therefore it became part of the church. And the General Assembly, all the way in 1817, even ran this up when they had to do a disestablishment act to take all of the lands that had been given by the monarchy to create churches, okay, because those were actually the separation of church and state, okay, at that time. This land was not found to be that because it was dedicated as a poor farm. These were your Anglicans, but you were also your Quakers. They are your society of friends. This is Richard Bennett's people, okay? And because of that, now and forever more, there are a number of foundations that have been dedicated and been giving for centuries care to the poor through minimum land holdings and poor farm here in Suffolk. When, in 1924, Nick Wright, a son of the American Revolution progeny, put a bridge in on Kings Highway, he did it such as it would not impact the Glebe Farm. This body cannot, will not, shall not, because I will go before Congress before this happens, intercede to connect and intersect the Glebe Farm. It is an American treasure. It is there at the Glebe that Cowper and Agnew got into it, okay, over whose loyalty was what, and essentially at that time stood and said, "Who do you serve?" Cowper says, "Someone across the ocean or God." And with that, went out across the colonies, a ring coming up on our Fourth of July, so you know, that said Nansman County is in rebellion against the monarchy. That is a historic place. There should have never been in 2008 a gentleman to come to this podium and say, "We're going to move the bridge that VDOT, because it's in disrepair, is trying to do something with over there in Kings Highway." And frankly, I'm going to let you know, we've been very verbal about the fact that if we have to kill the money entirely for all time to the Kings Highway Bridge, such that it doesn't interrupt the Nansman Indian artifacts that are under that river, the Glebe Church and poor farm that is in a trust that you cannot touch, thank you, God, that this city cannot disrupt that land, not even the General Assembly can do it. Because the General Assembly in 1817 said, "This land is protected. This land is for the poor. This land is to the church." And so, you know what the Glebe did out of generosity in 1950? It gave for the Great Decimal Swamp in a sale, didn't make a lot of money off of it, the land that is the nature preserve to the Great Decimal Swamp that's on the Nansman River, that refuge, those lands around it. So whoever came up in 2008, and I'm going to personally call, because I do not think our state representatives that have been running state bills through the General Assembly to get money for this thing, understand that somebody stood at this podium and lied to you, Mayor. That document that our Public Works Director, who was not Public Works at the time, said but did not show to this council, that the council previously approved the Kings Highway Bridge to be moved and to be brought over to Five Mile Road, was done prior to the 2021 public hearing that is required by VDOT, the state, and the Federal Highway Administration. And no one here was given the opportunity to review that document, but oh, lo and behold, the 200, the 530-some people or et cetera, et cetera, and so on, that came out during the COVID, to come out to do a survey and said, "We want the bridge where it's supposed to be," was stepped right over. Believe me, it hasn't gone unnoticed. Those people were coming forward, and I'm going to let you know, by and large, they realized that bridge probably wouldn't go back there. They were trying to protect the river, the Glebe, and the indigenous artifacts. They were trying to protect our history and our heritage. They knew the money wouldn't come forth. So every time you drop a gavel on sending that back up to the state, you are, in fact, sending tainted, inappropriate requests to the state. That is my word. Do not keep proceeding to touch the Glebe. It will not happen. Thank you and good night.
That concludes the Agenda Speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please present the items for consideration?
Consent agenda item number seven, a resolution adopting the 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan. Consent agenda item number eight, a resolution to endorse project applications under the Smart Scale Funding Program for Shoulders Hill Road Widening Lanes Two Through Four, Phase Two, Shoulders Hill Road Widening Lanes Two Through Four, Phase Three, Kings Highway Bridge Replacement 30% Design Plan, and Bridge Road Route 17 and College Drive Route 135 Left Turn Lane. And item number nine, a resolution to endorse a project application under the Smart Scale Funding Program for Windsor to Suffolk commuter bus service.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, in regards to item seven, it's a resolution adopting the 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan. The regional mitigation plan is required by FEMA to be updated and adopted by the 19 Hampton Roads jurisdictions every five years. The 2022 plan addresses regional vulnerability on a wide range of hazards and recommends specific actions to protect the region's residents, businesses, and environment. In regards to item eight, it is a resolution endorsing the submission of applications for four projects under FY26 and FY27 Smart Scale Funding Program. The four projects are the Shoulders Hill Road Widening, Phase Two, the Shoulders Hill Road Widening, Phase Three, Bridge Road and College Drive Left Turn Lane, and the Kings Highway Bridge 30% Design. Regards to item nine, it is a resolution endorsing the application for submission, or submission of application for the Windsor to Suffolk commuter bus service under the FY26 and FY27 Smart Scale Funding Program.
Council, are there any questions or comments about the items? If not, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Don't everybody jump out one time here. Here we go. Councilman Goldberg?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Councilman Williams?
Second, Mayor.
We get a motion for approval from Councilman Goldberg and a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance to grant the conditional use permit to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated on property located at 1226 White Marsh Road, Suite 202, zoning map 35, parcel 168D, account number 053405100, and it is CUP 202116. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Kevin Wine, Interim Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm going to start off a little unorthodox this evening. This is for conditional use permit, CUP 2021016, which is a public assembly use not otherwise enumerated. But we do have two other requests on the agenda tonight that are similar in nature. We have, first, the public assembly not otherwise enumerated, and then your next public hearings are for barbs and nightclubs in the Central Business District downtown. So I wanted to take an opportunity at the beginning of this presentation to kind of outline the difference between public assembly versus restaurant versus bar nightclub, and give you kind of a brief history on how the city has kind of consistently handled these in the past. So this first one, it's essentially a banquet room. It's at White Marsh Plaza. Public assembly not otherwise enumerated is defined as a building or indoor facility where individuals collect to participate or observe programs of participation. And like I said, examples include a banquet hall or public assembly halls, auditoriums, stadiums, gymnasiums, field houses, et cetera. So, we're also looking this evening at a couple bar and nightclubs who've requested a conditional use permit. Our Unified Development Ordinance does define both a bar and a nightclub separately. We group them together in our use table, and a bar is a premises used primarily for the sale or dispensing of alcoholic beverages by the drink for on-site consumption, and where food may be available for consumption as an accessory use. A nightclub is a bar, restaurant, or similar establishment where a dance floor or live entertainment is provided. So specifically this evening will, what categorizes two of these uses as a nightclub is the presence of a dance floor and live entertainment. So what exactly is live entertainment? That's an important component of this, and that's really any live performance. That's an important component of this, and that's really any live performance, to include music, spoken word, comedy, poetry, DJs, or any other physical production where someone is present. If area for dancing is provided, like I mentioned, if there's a little dance floor, that does meet the classification of a nightclub per our definition that I just shared with you, necessitating the need for a conditional use permit. However, it's important to note that two of these establishments are presently operating legally as a restaurant, first and foremost. And we do define restaurants, I'm not going to get into our very long definition here. However, the hours of operation for a restaurant use where people are sitting enjoying meals at your establishment will not be impacted by these conditional use permits, as they are related strictly to what we define as a bar and nightclub use, separate. So they could, in theory, operate their restaurant 24 hours if they wish. We do not have any regulations to restrain those. However, with the conditional use permit, we do look closely at the hours of operation for potential negative impacts related to live entertainment, in this case, noise. So restaurants are permitted by right in our business districts, our Central Business District and our B2 district most prominently, and they don't require a conditional use permit. Restaurants, like I said, can operate during any hours they wish without restrictions, and proposed hour operation restrictions only apply to that live entertainment component. Additionally, restaurants are permitted to have non-live music played by an establishment to be enjoyed by their patrons while they are there for their restaurant use. So we do have, in looking at our statistics here in the city, we currently have thirteen, at least thirteen like uses, that have received council approval. Like uses being a public assembly not otherwise enumerated, a live entertainment use, or a bar nightclub use. And all of these are restricted to midnight or earlier of those thirteen. So staff has consistently recommended hours of operation, limiting activity to no later than midnight on the weekends and 11:00 PM on the weeknights across the board. So with that being said, I'll jump into our first conditional use permit, and this is, as the mayor shared, is a conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty-one zero one six, and this is to grant a conditional use permit to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated. And this is at White Marsh Plaza, 1226 White Marsh Road, Suite 202. The property is zoned B2. That's our general commercial zoning district and is surrounded by single-family uses, zoned RLM to the northwest and south. To the east is the Children's Head Start Center, and that is zoned B1. So in this case, the applicant is requesting to lease as rental space for events such as baby showers, weddings, and dining events. The suite will include offices and conference rooms and a flexible space to be utilized for events. All food and beverages are proposed to be catered, and there will be no cooking or alcohol permitted on site, according to the narrative given to us by the applicant. The applicant has requested hours of operation on Sunday through Saturday, so every day of the week, from 8:00 AM to midnight. City staff, as I've noted, has consistently recommended 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to midnight, Friday and Saturday, for similar uses. The applicant has stated that there will be two full-time employees and all activities will take place indoors. As you may be aware, the city's Unified Development Ordinance does establish eight criteria that staff looks at in their review of these applications, and staff believes that, in reviewing these criteria, staff does believe that the use can operate harmoniously with the established uses when accompanied by staff's recommended conditions, as noted in our report. So as such, staff is recommending approval. The Planning Commission did consider this item at their meeting on May 17, 2022, and by a vote of six to zero, they have recommended, a resolution recommending approval of this application with the conditions as noted in staff's report. That concludes my presentation for this item. I'll be happy to address any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have any speakers to speak in favor?
Good afternoon, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Bennett, and City Manager and Madam Clerk. I'm here to represent the owner of the shopping center, Mr. Richard Perry, the owner of Big Bear LLC. This establishment is one of our tenants that's been very faithful and has done everything that we have required of them for providing you all with the information that you have. And so we're hoping and asking that you all would grant them this conditional use permit. Thank you. I'll be here to answer any questions as relate to the owner of the shopping center if you need me.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Joel Nichols. I'm the agent for George Adams. He is requesting, he submitted an application for a conditional use permit, twenty twenty-one dash zero one six. It is presently Shear Dynamics LLC Barber Shop, and he wants to change it to Pearl's Place and Event Venue. And it has been approved by, it has been approved by the planners, city planners, and I'm hoping that you all will approve this conditional use permit to go through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers to speak in favor? Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance been presented for consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, will you come up, please? What are the hours of operation? What are the hours under the conditional use permit? What are the hours?
The hours of operation that were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission as well as staff, I believe it is 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on weeknights, and Friday and Saturday would allow for 9:00 AM to midnight.
Okay. And they can do, have parties or whatever, they need to do their banquets, and it all has to be catered, there's no alcohol?
No alcohol would be allowed on site, as they noted in their narrative and in condition. Yes, sir.
How about according to the noise ordinance? They have to meet the noise ordinance for the neighborhood and so on?
Yes, the noise ordinance is something that's enforced by our police department, and they would have to operate their establishment in line with those.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, I was, I was looking at one of the items here on the condition. It says, "In the event of alcohol is proposed, the applicant shall be responsible for all activities conducted at the facility, including consumption of alcohol or beverage, under the authority of the license of Department of Alcohol and Beverage." Is that saying that?
Yes.
We have no control over them having alcohol?
No, I apologize. I did misspeak. These are kind of our general conditions for all these like uses. Generally, we do condition that if they are to serve alcohol, they would have to get compliance to the ABC. However, as counsel, you are more than welcome to prohibit the consumption of alcohol on the premises, if you wish.
Okay, that was just my concern. Well, you were saying that no alcohol would be allowed. Then I look at item six. It says that.
Thank you.
So what is it? It is or not?
No, they, as the conditions are approved right now, they could potentially have alcohol, provided they do get approval through the ABC.
So we can do it with taking item six out where alcohol will not be allowed?
That could be modified if you are so inclined this evening.
Okay, with that being said, I'll make a motion and it be approved with that item six, where no alcohol beverage be allowed, be approved.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor to approve the ordinance as is presented with the amendment to delete number six, which is, which would allow for alcohol.
Not allowed.
Well, it allows for alcohol now, we're going to make it go away, so you don't allow for alcohol.
That's what I understood it was requested.
Do we have a second?
Mayor, if we can just clarify the motion, because I think the motion is to change the condition in six from allow alcohol to a specific condition that says that no alcohol will be sold on the premises.
Or used, or? Which negates the need for number six.
If you, so if you take out number six and it's just blank, that number six just states what the law says, that if you have alcohol serving at a premises, you need to get a license from the ABC.
We would be adding a condition that alcohol would not be allowed.
Would not be served at the, on the premises.
Okay, so everybody understand the Vice Mayor's motion is to approve the ordinance?
That's what they requested, that would not be allowed.
Yeah, within their narrative provided with the application, they are stating alcohol will not be allowed on property.
Which means we would also delete number seven, which is, in the event that alcohol is proposed security, so that would be a moot point also. I would like, okay, we got a motion to approve the ordinance, amending it to not allow alcohol and delete item number six and seven.
Mayor?
Councilman Fawcett.
I'd like to go ahead and second the Vice Mayor's motion.
I'm sorry, say again?
I would like to second that motion. Are you giving a new motion, or you just want to second on the original motion?
No, that's the original motion. That is, Vice Mayor's original motion is to approve with the amendment to prohibit alcohol, which would result in deleting items number six and seven.
Yes, I do, I do second that motion.
Okay, we got a second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any further discussion? Nope, messed up again.
You didn't, we didn't delete six, we just amended six.
We amended six, okay.
You would be deleting seven.
Stickler for details here, we get it. Okay, we got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
And just for clarity, is that, is that the will of the maker and the seconder of the motion?
You okay with that?
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other council questions, comments, got a motion on the floor? I do have one question. Is there anyone here representing the applicant in the regards that can answer the question in regards to the alcohol that they did not request that and they don't want it? Okay, since we don't have anyone here to answer that question, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing no more discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Williams voting in opposition.
Okay, our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub for property located at 130 Commerce Street, zoning map thirty-four G eighteen, parentheses, A, parcel two forty-six, account number three five two eight seven two zero zero zero. This is CUP twenty twenty-two eight. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Counsel, Mr. Wine will also provide the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, this is a CUP to establish a bar and nightclub at 130 Commerce Street. It currently operates as a restaurant, and back in March of this year, the applicant did receive a notice of violation from our zoning division for the use of live entertainment. And in an effort to come into compliance, they have submitted the conditional use permit to bring their establishment into compliance. The property is zoned CBD, Central Business District, and HC Historic Conservation. To the northeast, to the north and east of the property, excuse me, is single-family residential dwelling zoned CBD and RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. To the west of the property is the courthouse parking lot, and to the south is the Commerce Street parking lot. The existing business has operated in the location since 2020 as a restaurant and bar. Their current services include lunch and dinner with inside and outdoor dining, as well as a full bar between the hours of 11:00 AM and 2:00 AM seven days a week. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit for a bar and nightclub in order to allow for live entertainment in their establishment. The proposed live entertainment will include DJs, live bands, acoustic performers, karaoke, and other like events. The applicant is proposing to serve its full menu until 2:00 AM with the live entertainment ending at midnight. The applicant is also requesting live acoustic entertainment on the outdoor patio. This would be fairly infrequent and would end by 6:00 PM. Staff would condition that the bars and the bar and nightclub use would be within the hours that have consistently been approved by staff, and once again, that's 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM during your weekdays, Sunday through Thursday, and then on Friday and Saturday, that would allow for 9:00 AM to midnight. So staff has evaluated this in conformance with the criteria outlined in the UDO as it relates to conditional use permits, and when accompanied by the recommended conditions, it should be able to operate in a fashion compatible with nearby uses. The Planning Commission at their meeting, May 17, 2022, voted six to one to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with modified conditions. The first two modifications included two conditions that weren't present previously. One, condition twelve, that would require smoke abatement condition, and condition thirteen, which requires the Health Department approval if they are to serve food. The more significantly, condition two, as it related to the hours of operation, the Planning Commission recommended to reduce the days that outdoor entertainment could be offered to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Previously, staff was recommending that that be permitted seven days a week. So with that being said, that concludes staff's report on this item. I will be happy to address any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and ad- This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Hi, my name is Karen Two. Address is twenty-five fifty-six Prudent Boulevard.
Hi, I'm Katie Two, and I'm the owner of High Tide, along with my mom, Karen Two.
Yeah, and we live at the same address. Yeah, so, uh, essentially, our, um, restaurant has been in operation since August. Um, it's of twenty twenty, so it's two years. Um, at the time that we opened, we opened as a full-service restaurant. We've been, um, servicing from eleven AM till two AM, um, seven days a week. Um, at the time that we started, um, with our business, we also did have live entertainment. We were unaware that we needed a conditional use permit. Um, we've had acoustics there, DJs, um, just a variety of entertainment from time to time. Um, and we, again, in March, um, we were notified that we needed to have this permit, um, so we've gone through the process. The times and limitation, uh, that we submitted for the conditional use permit were at the recommendation of the Planning Committee. Um, up until this point, we have been operating until two AM with our live music, um, particularly on Friday and Saturday, staying until one, one-thirty AM. So there is a decrease in the amount of time that the Planning Commission has recommended that we apply for. During the whole process, there was a lot of conversation about these limitations. Um, we do understand that this is what the standard is in stuff, in Suffolk at this time, um, and that is what we are requesting. However, I also request that if there is, and I, I believe that there is going to be some other, um, investigation, because we're not the only one that has been operating up until or past twelve, um, that perhaps that may be lengthened at another point in time, so I don't know. Um, so.
Also, I think that we would like to have, like, holidays, or even just any day until two AM is what we would really like. But because we were told that the recommendation is twelve o'clock and eleven o'clock during the weekdays, that's what we're asking for, um, in the future. If something changes, we would really like to be able to play music until our ABC license allows us to sell alcohol.
Yeah, and so we, we are in full compliance with the ABC license, the Health Department, um, all the other conditions that are listed on the conditional use permit and the requirements that they've listed there. That's it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a next speaker to speak in favor.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeffrey Townsend, one twenty-one Niblet Circle. Uh, I'm also owner of Renee's Restaurant and Lounge. High Tide bring good, um, vibe to the downtown suffer. I know looking at y'all faces, y'all normally don't come downtown at eleven or twelve. Haven't seen y'all that one time. But they bring a good vibe to suffer. Uh, if y'all cut their hours down or don't give them live entertainment, our citizen, ninety-four thousand people, gonna go elsewhere. They can go to Portsmouth, they can go to Franklin, they go somewhere else to entertain. So I ask y'all to give them their hours. Um, we have a holiday coming up on Monday. If you ask them to close at eleven, they're gonna lose money again. With this post-COVID, we gotta do things to make money for our business. So I ask y'all to give them their time, give them their live entertainment.
Thank you, sir. We get our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Brian Saunders. I reside currently at three oh one Turlington Lo-, uh, Turlington Road, excuse me. Uh, prior to that, I resided at one fifty-five West Washington Street. Um, and obviously, I'm, we're talking about, uh, High Tides, uh, but I'm also, also gonna speak in opposition to, uh, number twelve on the agenda as well. The, uh, the gentleman from the city mentioned, uh, they currently want, they want to operate as a bar nightclub. I have been at High Tides. I've been in both establishments, actually, uh, and it's my belief they're both operating as a bar nightclub, club currently. Uh, my biggest opposition, uh, you know, High Tides is, is a different dynamic than, than Agenda Twelve, uh, in that they have a.
If you would, let's, let's speak to item eleven, then you can come back up and speak to item twelve.
Certainly, certainly.
Tackle one at a time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, my biggest opposite, opposition is the hours, uh, especially on Sunday, from nine AM, uh, to eleven PM. I believe on Sunday, there are three churches within the vicinity of High Tides. I mean, literally within eye shot, uh, of, of the facility. I think that at least back the hours up, maybe to one PM on Sunday, and not nine AM, just to one day. Uh, other than that, I have no opposition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? If not, ladies, you have a five-minute rebuttal period.
I just wanna say that, um, backing up to one o'clock, I, I'm assuming you're talking about the one o'clock on the patio, um, because of the church, churches, and I certainly can understand that. And we had asked for eleven, because that's the time that we open, and we would end at six. Um, the muse, what we propose and what we plan is just to have acoustics out there, um, not a live band, not a DJ, um, primarily just acoustics, just like the brewery has. Um, and I don't think that there is gonna be any impact on the noise level in that area. Um, there are several churches there, um, but the way that our patio is situated, we're situated here, churches are over here. Um, churches are usually out by, I guess, twelve, twelve-thirty, so I just, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this rebuttal time? Hearing no additional speakers, this hearing is now closed. Counsel and ordinance has been presented for consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, you come up again, please? Let's talk about parking and the use of the public parking facilities and the maintenance of those parking facilities. I've been there, and I've seen the parking facilities after an evening. There's glass bottles and all kinds of things in those parking lots. I've had complaints called to me by some of the people in the, uh, city building down there. Uh, I wanna know what, what's the liability for that issue, uh, and also, uh, uh, the nine o'clock playing on Sundays and whatever. Tell me what we got, and the noise level. Again, I wanna make sure the noise, that, that we stay within the proper decibels of, uh, of what goes on.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll hit that second question first, and I'll come back to the first. Um, the, the noise ordinance, uh, as codified in city code, is in full effect, and they'd have to meet those provisions. Um, and, uh, once again, that's, uh, something that falls under the purview of the enforcement of the police department. Uh, so if there's a noise complaint, they, they could certainly have someone investigate. Uh, my understanding is what they are doing in the outside areas, just acoustic music only on the patio, uh, during very restricted hours. Uh, we, we recommended from staff level, nine AM to, uh, to six PM, that restriction that they, uh, kind of self-imposed to six PM, um, just to kind of coincide with how we traditionally apply those hours of operation. Um, however, once again, if, if city council is so inclined, you could certainly modify the hours of operation for that outdoor acoustic music. Uh, when it comes to the, the parking lot, um, I'm, I'm not sure if Robert Lewis is here, or, uh, Public Works Director, he could speak more to the liability issue there. Um, from a planning perspective, the Central Business District, it's, it's downtown. Some uses will not have their own parking lot, and that's why we have a lot of public parking lots. Um, there's a provision in the Unified Development Ordinance that, uh, essentially notes that, uh, adequate public facilities are addressed, because it is downtown, and, uh, it's assumed that they're available for uses. Additionally, our zoning administrator has a great deal of, um, of flexibility in, in looking at, uh, nearby public parking, uh, when analyzing these uses.
Say again? Oh, must've cut yourself off there.
Okay, that's all right. I probably did.
You did.
Um, what's the effect on the, uh, on the, um, building there, the Godwin Building, as far as the Sheriff's Department and others parking, uh, when they have to come in at night or do something, or extra duty or what have you, in parking spaces or, or, or not there? What do we do about that?
Um, I can't speak to that, uh, directly, um, but I do know that when we did our downtown, uh.
Mr. Wine, I think the manager wants to interject something there.
All right.
Kinda get you off the ledge.
I'm sorry. Messed me up. Um, as you recall, you may not, uh, but, and within the, um, operating budget, uh, for the Sheriff's Department, we have funded, um, we have, uh, you adopted funding for, um, fencing that area right there for security reasons, right where the judges enter, right across. So that eventually here in a few months will be a fenced area where I think you're, uh.
That's what I'm referring to, yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how about the maintenance as far as, listen, I've been there, and, and glass and other things are in the parking lot that have been broken. I've seen them, just drop them there, uh, in the, in the public yard, and who picks it, who cleans that up? The city cleans that up. Uh, it takes our personnel to do that, and I've seen it. I've been there a couple of times, and, uh, I just, I, I'm not comfortable with that. So, uh, Mayor, uh, City Manager, uh, can we speak to that a little bit?
Uh, yes, we'd have to, uh, if we have any nuisance, we'd have to monitor that and, and take the appropriate actions, and, uh, you've said it's occurring. So I know, um, in talking with the sheriff, it's brought some things to my attention already on, on that. So we'll continue to monitor that and hope our businesses work with us, uh, as we move ahead here.
Well, I've had calls on it. That's the only reason why I went down there, because I had calls. I'd gone in there to eat a couple of times and, and things. And, uh, then I, I come out and I see all this going on, and then I get called on it, so it's a concern to me, uh, for that. Uh, that, uh, could be a, could be a problem, and so, uh, uh, it's a concern, and then the hours of operation. Uh, I have a concern for the hours of operation, and I wanna make sure they live by the decibels. Uh, I don't want, uh, the other calls coming in about being loud, and, you know, all of a sudden, they, they anticipate the police coming down there, and they turn it down, and what have you. That bothers me. So there's a lot of this, uh, I just, I'm not comfortable with, and so, uh, I just say that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
I just had a couple of questions and comments earlier. On the, uh, I wanna make sure we're on a level playing field with all the restaurants, uh, whatever they call, will be downtown. Cause what's, for one, I wanna see where it's gonna be across the board. So whatever we do here, I look for us to do the same thing with the other ones. Now, this one's saying that the Sunday operation is from nine to eleven, and then, uh, Saturday and Sunday to midnight. So they are at the threshold of twelve o'clock. Is that basically where all the restaurants, uh, and bars will be limited?
No, uh, going back to kind of my previous presentation about restaurants. Uh, restaurants and bars are, are permitted to operate, well, bars in accordance with our ABC license, generally, that's until two AM. Um, restaurants can, can operate, um, basically non-restrictive, um, if they, if they so choose. Those are permitted by right.
Okay.
Um, when it comes to the, the consideration of a conditional use permit allows, uh, staff and Planning Commission, and ultimately, city council to approve certain conditions they feel are appropriate, um, to mitigate potential negative impacts. And noise, obviously, is at the forefront for this live entertainment bar nightclub use, and, um, that is where the hours of operation would be limited. Uh, so going back to, um, those that we have approved in the city, uh, consistently, they have been limited to at least midnight or earlier. Um, the major, vast majority of those midnight on the weekends and eleven PM on the weeknights.
So I'm hearing you correctly, that all of them will be able to have music until twelve midnight.
All, all the restaurants?
Yeah.
Uh, no, uh, restaurants are permitted by right. The live entertainment, if they're gonna have music, live music, um, with a band or, uh, a comedy show, or anything like that, that kicks it into the, the nightclub use, in which they would have to apply for a conditional use permit, uh, such as, uh, High Tide is doing here.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Mayor Duman?
Council, any other questions or comments?
Mayor Duman?
Motion? Councilperson Butler Barlow?
I just wanted to comment that I, um, I think that offering live entertainment downtown would be a great asset to our area, and appreciate anybody that's willing to offer live music, so just wanted to make that comment.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, stay. So what they asking for now is to have live entertainment to two o'clock?
No.
Uh, no, at this point, uh, we, we did communicate with the applicant, um, while, uh, staff was considering it before it went to the Planning Commission. Uh, we notified them, uh, of the hours of operation that, one, was consistently approved, uh, at the council level, um, and, and what staff would be comfortable recommending approval of, and they modified their narrative to reflect that. That's, uh, eleven PM on the weeknights, midnight, uh, for live entertainment on the weekends. And, uh, that is what the ordinance that you, uh, have before you would reflects.
Okay, Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Um, just one comment on the condition which was modified under modification number two. The Sunday entertainment from nine AM until six PM. You know, I'd like to make a little argument there that I don't understand why anybody on a Sunday morning at nine AM, whether they do or they don't, have some kind of entertainment on the patio, uh, with the, the surrounding churches and the neighborhood behind it, just feel that that is, um, a little bit too much. I think that, you know, if I were to do something, uh, to vote on this tonight, I'd like to modify that condition to reflect back to one PM to six PM, and that gives the chance for the people to have the quiet time and the churches to have their time. It doesn't matter whether or not they feel that that music's gonna radiate out into the neighborhoods, or there's a church right proximity and a, I think it's a daycare school right behind it. I just think it's appropriate to go to one PM on a Sunday, one to six, and I would not approve it otherwise if they do not modify or allow us to modify that.
So would you like to make a motion for approval amending the Sunday hours from twelve to six, or one to six? Or would you rather hear more discussion?
I'd rather hear more discussion, and I'd like to reserve to come back to make that modification.
Okay, um, I'm gonna interject a little, if I can. Number one, it, it's confusing, because restaurants do not have any hours at all. They choose to stay open to two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock, maybe twenty-four, seven. They can be, uh, serve hamburgers and eggs at five o'clock in the morning. So restaurants do, are not limited by hour, period. This is a little, what we need to do is maybe change the wording in our ordinance from a bar, with bar and lounge, to a restaurant who wants a CUP for live entertainment. Once they get live entertainment, then, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, then they become classified as a bar and lounge during the live entertainment portion of it, if you will. So the same restaurant, we're approving the CUP for live entertainment to a certain time. That could be midnight. At midnight, the band comes in, and they can stay open to the next day if they want to. You never have to close. You can do like twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. So that's why it's a little confusing. You know, really, what we've got here is restaurants requesting live entertainment. Without the live entertainment, there are no hours, but because this is a conditional use permit for the live entertainment, then that gives us the latitude to restrict the time of that activity at the restaurant. So that's why it's a little confusing, cause we're calling it something else. But in actuality, it's a restaurant that wants live entertainment, and it is confusing. So with that said, I mean, I'm all about downtown, creating a vibrant downtown. I wanna do two o'clock in the morning, believe me. I wanna do, I mean, I envision eventually two o'clock in the morning, closing down both ends of Washington Street, just have like a little Bourbon Street in there, whatever you wanna call it, close it down at Washington Street, close it down at Saratoga, but the key is that we have to do it. Close it down at Washington Street, close it down at Saratoga. But the key is that we have to do it at the right time. We have to be prepared. We have to ensure that we have code enforcement. We have to ensure that we have proper lighting. We have to ensure that we have proper security in the way of cameras. We have to ensure that we have a police presence either on foot or on bicycle. Because the worst we can do is be premature in extending these hours. And then there turns out to be a couple of unfortunate incidents. And then what will happen is there will be a perception that it's not safe to go to downtown Suffolk. And that's the last thing we want. So I think we're all working towards a common goal. You know, being in business, I understand you have to have opportunities to create business. You have to have an opportunity to be able to accommodate your customers. So I think this is a step in the right direction. You know, I do not have a problem with, with live entertainment and we're getting ready to do 12 also. But, you know, and I was going to kind of talk about this at 12, but I might as well talk about it now. All of this is going to be under a microscope. I mean, let's face it, it's going to be under a microscope. So the applicants need to ensure that they adhere to the CUP, that they're aware of what counts, issues like Councilman Goldberg brought up, and especially sound. Sound is the key. And you look at the noise ordinance and I printed a copy of it. You want to look it up, section 34-189. And there's not a lot of latitude there. Noise that travels 50 feet and you're done. 50 feet is from here to the back of that room. So it's a little dicey as far as noise is concerned. And then there's the other issues. Are we going to make sure that you adhere to all the other guidelines that, that we have in place? So it would, right now, we do not have a motion on the floor, but I also agree with Councilman Fawcett and I agree with the Vice Mayor that whatever we do, we need to do across the board. But these things are still conditional use permits. So if we choose to restrict the hours on Sunday because both these locations are in close proximity to a church, but five blocks down the road, there are no churches. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to restrict the Sunday hours because there are no churches there. But in this case, like I said, we do not have a motion on the floor. I would suggest maybe a motion to approve the ordinance as presented, amending Sunday hours to 11:00 to 6:00, 12:00 to 6:00, whatever your pleasure is, you know, during church hours. And that would kind of take care of that. So with that being said, Councilman Johnson?
Well, that's what I was going to say. But first, I, I think this is the right place for us to be right now as a city. We are a growing city. We want these musical events. I agree with everyone up here, Ms. Barlow, all of them. We need music downtown. We need to walk out of church and you need to hear the music in that shopping center over there. And says, okay, let me go in that shopping center now. And that's, I, I really don't have a huge problem with it. But I will say amend it to the fact that from 12, start at 12 o'clock. Why do we need to go to 1? Say 12 to 6 on Sundays rather than not. And you're not going to be abusive with it. These guys, all of you are here to make money and you're going to do the right thing. And you're going to attract people to your restaurant with the music. And I do think, I'm not ready for two o'clock yet as a citizen. With all the investments we're getting ready to make in downtown Suffolk and where we're heading with this thing, I'm excited about where we're going to be. And I'm like Ms. Dooman, I think two o'clock's coming. I mean, I think it's coming for everybody and I think we're all going to grab and you and the other 17 restaurants we're going to open. But my point being, I think this is the right decision for right now with our growing city. And with that being said, I would like to make an amended motion to accept this as presented, but to change it to tw- only on Sundays from 12:00 to 6:00.
Actually, well.
Excuse me, outside only.
On the outside.
On the outside.
And it's actually, we don't have a motion on the floor, so that would be your motion to approve.
To approve as presented.
The conditions to Sunday outside, outside entertainment, not inside, be limited from 12:00 to 6:00. And that is the motion. And Councilman Williams, you are next in line.
Yes, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to second this motion. However, I would like to say I'm glad that you made it clear that it does not affect the operational hours for the restaurant. That's the main thing. So it doesn't, does not mean that you have to stop operating your restaurant at 12:00. You can continue that, that operation. And with that said, I'd like to second that motion.
Councilman Ward?
No, I was going to second, but he.
You okay? All right, we have a motion in a second to approve as presented with the amending Sunday hours from 12:00 to 6:00. Any further discuss, outside entertainment, 12:00 to 6:00, clarify that. Live entertainment. Roger, have you got any other comments? Are you okay?
No, sir. I, I agree with Tim. I can go at 12:00. That's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one with Councilmember Goldberg voting in opposition.
Okay, our next most, our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub on property located at 156 West Washington Street. Zoning map 34G18 parentheses A, parcel 312, account number 351316000. This is CUP 2022-7. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, members of council, Mr. Wine will also prevent, present the staff report, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub at property located at 156 West Washington Street. The property is within the central growth area designated mixed use core, use district. The subject property and surrounding properties are zone CBD, which is our central business district, and is located also in our historic overlay, historic conservation overlay district. So this is a request for Renee's Restaurant and Lounge at 156 West Washington Street. They currently provide food and alcohol on site for which they do have a current ABC permit and, and the necessary permits from the health department for seven days a week between hours of 9:00 AM and 2:00 AM. The applicant's proposing to utilize only the ground floor of the existing building to establish a bar and nightclub use for the purposes of providing live entertainment in the form of comedians, hookah, disc jockeys, live music, in addition to hosting wedding receptions. The applicant is proposing to have live entertainment between the hours of 9:00 AM and 2:00 AM Monday through Friday and 24 hours a day on Saturday and Sunday. As mentioned earlier this evening, the restaurant use is permitted to operate as a matter of right in the CBD with no hours of operation limitations. However, the live entertainment use falls under the city's definition for bar and nightclub. As such, it necessitates the need for a conditional use permit. The property owner did receive a notice of violation for the live entertainment use on March 4th of this year, notifying them that a CUP must be approved for their continued operation of the live entertainment component. Staff has evaluated this request for compliance with our criteria for consideration of conditional use permits and believes that the use should be able to operate in a fashion that is compatible with the neighboring uses in the downtown core when accompanied by staff's recommended conditions. Lastly, the planning commission at their meeting of May 17th, 2022, voted four to two to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the conditions noted in your report. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to address any questions at the conclusion of the public.
Okay. Once again, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, Councilwoman. My name is Renee Townsend. I reside at 121 Niblick Circle in Suffolk, Virginia. My, I'm the owner of Renee's Celebrations, Renee's Restaurant and Lounge. And I want to make clear because we did not ask for a different usage of the building or rename or repurpose of the building to a bar and nightclub. It was AJ Gators at the beginning, then it went to Fats, Cats, and then it went to Boogie's, and now it's Renee's. What is the difference between a bar and a restaurant? A bar is all about consuming alcohol. It's alcohol, alcohol, dance, bar, club. People come here to drink, then some drink more and they possibly might dance and has a dance floor. The bar might entice customers with some appetizers or something to make the alcohol taste better. But a restaurant, on the other hand, is serve meals. And the customer may get alcohol beverages as a drink. This is important because my ABC license for this restaurant, I have to be accountable for a ratio of food, which is 55% of my sales has to be 55% and my alcohol has to be 45% of sales. If I was a bar nightclub, my sales can be 100% of alcohol. I opened my doors in February the 4th, 2022. We were cited to stop and to cease live entertainment. We were only having a DJ. In March 4th, 2022, because we needed a conditional use permit for live entertainment. However, I was not doing anything which was not customary for downtown restaurants. All restaurants was having live entertainment in the downtown district. But when the city cited me, I was lost for actions because I didn't know why. It appears that only reason I was cited is that because I was black and I was a female. And because I patronized these light business from, all the way from 10, all the way from downtown, from Masons to Ty to Berens Pub, all of them, I patronized all these businesses before I even thought about opening my business. Now I owned 156 West Washington for quite some time and Boogie was renting from me. However, I need someone to show me, which planning cannot, in the book where regulations local codes that a DJ is live entertainment. I felt like the city was attacking me, but they said the others were not reported. So they were not on the chopping block because they were not reporting. So I reported on all of them. I reported them. And now the city has 10 CUPs because of me. A month into the CUP process, I was told by the city to request a permit from Parks and Recreation, which was a joke. The first page just gave my name and address. The rest of it didn't even apply to me. How many porta potties, how many securities, how many doors are you going, how many this, how many that? It was a brick and mortar, that they had nothing to do with. The young lady that was assisting me in Park and Recreation didn't even know what she was doing. I am not, but eventually it's clearly found that after all the white restaurant owners were filled, were filling it financially, then they came up with this, fix it. So they come up with this remedy until the CUP was heard, because I truly believe in fairness. I'm not asking for favor. I'm asking for fairness. What's good for the goose, good for the gander all across the city. Remember, councilmen and people of Suffolk, the municipality said no to, blacks could not go to school with whites. Blacks could not marry whites. Gays could not marry. Hell, blacks could not own property, not only a business. Member responded, can't wait until they, we just had a member and a school board member that said, you know, she responded that we were doing a black, um, black history celebration. She said, she just, it says just, um, it says somebody like black history. And she's, the member said, I can't wait till we have white joy. Just let you know, people's hearts are still prejudiced against blacks for being black and prospering. But do that make it right? No, it doesn't. But we have, we have been fighting this fight for a long time, for over 100 years. Suffolk is competing with all surrounding cities. People are not just staying in surprising Suffolk anymore. We have transportation. We have cell phones. We have social media, which allows communication to travel as fast as light. This governing body realized that Suffolk is competing because all of these housing, these apartments, these schools, these shopping centers, that they are proving to be built, downtown is competing with North Suffolk. It's not just competing with North Suffolk. It's competing with Chesapeake, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, and even Williamsburg, because people have no problem driving 45 minutes, 30 minutes, anywhere. They don't have no problem with that. We are living in a global financial market. People are everywhere, so they have no problem leaving my place and take their dollars to other cities because we have to discontinue entertainment at 12:00 AM. This is a trickle-down effect because the business is not making money, the employees is not making money, my distributors is not making money, such as Cisco and Hoffman, they're not making money. Just think about it. If you had a car and you can make money until 2:00 AM bartending in Portsmouth, would you stay at Renee's? I know I would not. Therefore, the employees are not making money because all money is going to Chesapeake, Norfolk, Portsmouth, et cetera. A person that wants to cause trouble will cause trouble locally, out of the state, worldwide, which is being proven every day. Just turn on the news. No gun law is going to help murders, stop murdering. No sex laws is not, is not going to help molesters stop molesting. No criminal law is going to stop criminals for being criminals. And the chief of Suffolk Police, he said, and he, he and his department would be there to enforce the law. Suffolk population is estimated to be 95,000. The median income is 74,000. The median property value is 254,000. And the property tax on the average that's being collected in the city of Suffolk is 3,000 per house. Yet, the municipality is struggling with live entertainment, which I do not understand and I'm lost for words, live entertainment with all understanding that our city is being left behind. And I know y'all heard that term, left behind. Because the mentality of Suffolk thinking, and it's not just Suffolk anymore, it's global. You asked, you have asked yourself, what is the goal of Suffolk? Ask yourself, what is the goal? Is it to bring additional revenue to downtown Suffolk? Is it to fulfill employment and recreation to the citizens of Suffolk? Is it to be socially supportive and financially sound city? Or is it to usher small business out of business? Or is it to increase the unemployment rate? Or is it to create vacant buildings downtown again? Because I own three. Or is it to limit how much money we can make? If it's the latter three, please let me know now, because I can close my own business. I don't need your assistance. But it's funny that it was not under microscope until Renee's opened. It was not under microscope until Renee's opened. That's the funny part. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other speakers to speak in favor? We've got about one minute left.
One minute, took all the time.
You need to be brief.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jeffrey Townsend, 121. This is my wife, and she spoke from her heart. She spoke from her heart. Surprising Suffolk is no more surprising. I'm not happy with downtown. Mike Dooman, you can't sell cars on Sunday. How would you feel if you can't sell cars on Sunday because of my religion? Mr. Ward, you can't sell your newspaper because they throw it on the ground. How would you feel? Mr. Goldberg, I have three buildings and you have not visited one of them. You haven't had lunch with me. And in December, you'll be coming up for reelection. I'm going to make sure you get re-elected. But I ask y'all to support everybody downtown, everybody downtown. I got three buildings. And you do evaluate that three buildings? Um, I'm not no poor young man. We work hard for everything we get. I'm continuing working hard. So I ask y'all to support everything we ask for. And live entertainment, I can turn my DJ off at 12:00 o'clock. My sound system is just as loud as a DJ. He got a playlist for me that can play all his songs for the next two hours. Nothing changed. My hours is still two o'clock. 12:00, the DJ step, one step to the left, keep, continue playing your music on my system. Twelve o'clock, the DJ step, one step to the left, keep, continue playing your music on my system. I'm not a DJ. Mr. Williams, your brother had my building, uh, for six months. You had your, uh, your election party, and you had a DJ, and we had a good time there. I support everybody. So now, since y'all making a decision on something that really affecting everybody lives, everybody lives. I employed twenty people. Now I gotta cut down fifteen. Maybe cut down to ten because y'all decision. My time is up.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now move to, uh, speakers to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mayor Dooman, council members, and city staff. My name is Betsy Brothers. I reside at three thirteen West River View Drive in town in Suffolk. You know, Suffolk has come such a long way in the last twenty or thirty years. The downtown was pretty much boarded up for a long time. All the houses along Main Street were as well. So now, we have the setting for an incredible downtown. So many downtowns or towns around us would give anything to have the structures we have, to have the atmosphere we have. We have an absolutely gorgeous downtown. I've lived here my entire life. My family's been here forever, and I love Suffolk. And I love entertainment. I like nightclubs. I'm old, but I still do. My concern is that we do this in the right way and that we do it in the safe way and that we have a downtown, a Main Street, a West Washington Street, where families can walk down the street in the daytime and at night to go to shops, to go to restaurants, to go to these nightclubs that are being proposed or already up and running. I admire all of you who have businesses. That's what we need. We need businesses and these stores. It used to be a thriving downtown, and the young lady speaking is right. We're losing business all the time to Norfolk, Portsmouth, Chesapeake, Smithfield, all around us. So we can change that, but it's gonna take a huge amount of work, vision, and everybody working together to make a beautiful, as you were talking about, more lights, more cameras, all the things that make a vibrant downtown successful. And I know we all go to places like that. That's where we like to visit. So I urge you to deny this request for these long, long hours and to help make downtown Suffolk safer. And for goodness sakes, please, let's do whatever we can to have police presence downtown so all of these businesses can thrive. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening again. My name is Brian Saunders. I reside at three oh one Tarleton Road, Suffolk, Virginia, two three four three four. Let me give you a little background. Up until a week ago, I lived at one fifty-five West Washington Street, which is directly across the street from Renee's. And trust me, I'm the biggest capitalist in here, probably other than Mr. Mike Dooman and a few others. But, uh, and I've also resided, I've, I've leased property from Justin Bush on one sixty West Washington Street, which is directly next to, uh, Renee's. I have owned property on North Main Street. I've leased property on North Main Street, and I've lived on North Main Street. Also own property in Waylandville. So I'm a business owner. I've contributed to the, to tax coffers in the city of Suffolk. I do believe that Renee's, just like Hightides, is operating as a bar nightclub currently. I think it's semantics. I think Mike Dooman expressed it, is, is really semantics more than anything. I could, I could care less. They're, they're restaurant people. I respect restaurant people, trust me. Uh, and I'll give you a background. I'm a real estate broker by trade. I've been a real estate broker for twelve, thirteen years now. Prior to that, I was a restaurant manager. I've run some of the best restaurants in Hampton Roads. So I know what they're going through, staffing issues, food costs, et cetera. Uh, and it's only getting worse. It's not getting better. So I understand. Have I ever operated a bar nightclub? Not really. It's primarily restaurant. Uh, with that being said, you know, I do have a couple of issues here. Being directly across the street, I can give you some unique experiences. Because I am currently back in the restaurant business. I work long hours. I come home from work typically with a lot of cash in my pocket. Typically, I have to, I typically, I, I live, actually, I work on West Washington Street in addition to living there. I moved a week ago. I moved because of the crime, the lack of police presence, et cetera. The fact I walk out of my apartment in the morning and I open my door and I break glass. I break glass because there's bottles in front of my door. And Mr. Goldberg said a while ago, you know, the city picks up glass behind the courthouse because of, uh, high tides. Well, if you're a business owner or a resident on West Washington Street, when the glass gets broken, you best pick it up yourself because you're not going to wait for the city to clean it up. I can, I can assure you that. So every morning, I go in front of my apartment, or I did up until a week ago, and I cleaned up glass, amongst other things, trash, food, et cetera. So that, that's one thing. There's a noise problem. I typically get off work late. I stay up late. My apartment was deep. Again, it's one fifty-five West Washington Street. So there was probably fifty, sixty feet from the street side on West, on, on Washington Street to the back of my apartment. Well, my living room was on the back of the apartment. When I'm watching TV and cannot hear my TV because of the noise coming from the restaurant across the street, which is Renee's, that's a problem. When I'm trying to sleep and I no longer have a two-bedroom apartment, I cannot reside in my front apartment. I have to move everything to the middle apartment just so I'm able to sleep and sleep with, uh, with, uh, earplugs in my ears to sleep. Because guess what? When the party ends, the party doesn't end. Because even though they adhere to the law and they close down, and they have no control over their, their patrons, but they're, they're standing out in front of the restaurant arguing with their significant other, arguing with their friends, they're intoxicated. They drink. I drink. I go to Barron's quite often. You know, so that, that's a problem. You know, you, you, you've got to manage your business and you've got to watch the noise level. So that's all I'm gonna say about the noise. Uh, and also, I believe his name is Kevin mentioned, he defined live entertainment. I wish he'd defined, uh, dance floor. Because I have seen people dancing in the middle Washington Street at two o'clock in the morning, one-thirty in the morning, one o'clock in the morning, yelling. I've seen fights. I've seen police block off the street, get out of their patrol cars and run. And we've already acknowledged that we're about thirty-five staff low with, on the police force. So having police converge, and keep in mind where Renee's is located. We have police headquarters here, we have a precinct here, and Renee's in the middle. And we're taking all these police resources from places like East Washington Street, which probably could deserve to have the extra attention, to handle fights. I mean, and Renee's does have security, and I think they do quite, and, and so does Hightides. They, 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 they do a good job, but you know, once they leave the premises, they're kind of laissez-faire, they're hands-off, uh, you know, with the patrons, which, you know, their authority doesn't exceed leaving the premises. That's number one. And the only other thing I had to say, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Townsend and Ms. Townsend, uh, about the DJ issue. To me, live entertainment and DJ, to be perfectly honest, live entertainment is quieter than a DJ, you know, than a DJ. So I, I, I think the city needs to determine live entertainment and DJ because to me, it's one and the same. A DJ can be louder or, uh, speakers can be louder than live entertainment. That's, uh, one of the last things I want to say. The only other thing I want to say, the race issue. I think it's irresponsible of a business owner to bring up race, because this is not a race issue. This is, you need to mind your business. Your clientele, Ms. Townsend, Mr. Townsend, Renee, they're ABC officers. Their responsibility is to their patrons and the people around them. Monument and Legend spent a lot of money. They're developing the Suffolk News Herald, Old Suffolk News Herald Building, spending a lot of money bringing people downtown. I might be the only one here that was a resident or former resident, but there are many, many people that are complaining. I've never filed a complaint with Renee's, not one. But there are many people that live in those condos that, uh, Legend and Monument, uh, run that have complained. And I can guarantee not one of them is a, uh, is someone of, of my ethnicity. Not one of them's white. They're all black. So I, I think it's very ignorant of a business owner to bring up race because it's not a race issue. It's minding your business, keeping quiet, keeping the street clean, et cetera. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. We have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? If not, um, we have a five-minute rebuttal period?
Uh, Mr. Townsend again. Young man, everything's about race. I did thirty-four years in the military. Race was there. School system, race is there. City council, race is there. Police department, race is there. So in business, yes, you gotta say race. We gotta stop and, and go, young lady, when she said that we want to go back to the Old Suffolk, nah, let's go back to horses. Let's stop riding cars back. How far you want to go back? Are we moving forward or we want to go backwards? Are we moving forward or we going backwards? That young man said that he had a complaint about noise. And when it was boogies, did he complain to anybody? When it was fat cats, if he was here, did he complain to anybody? Did he even complain to me? Did he even come to my building and say, Mr. Townsend, that noise is kind of loud. Can you do something about it? No. No, he didn't do that. Not one time. I ask y'all, uh, whatever they asking for, you got more people in supporting of having a bar or nightclub or restaurant than one or two people.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance during the rebuttal period?
I am Renee Townsend, one two one, Nippon Circle. And I don't appreciate being called ignorant. You are ignorant. And it is all about race. I retired from Suffolk Public Schools out of twenty-six years, and I retired from the military out of twenty-four years. And I'd be doggone if I didn't face racism every time and every time I turned around. Being black and a woman is, and like I said, no one reported all the other restaurants. But they said, so they were doing everything already, it was customary for the restaurants to have live entertainment, have DJs, have comedian shows. I just had a DJ. And I got reported, and what I received was, they were not reported. Why they weren't reported? Why they weren't reported? You stayed across from them. Why was they were not reported? I just got in the game February twenty twenty-two. They reported me March twenty twenty-two. Why I'm to the two years, three years, four years, five years, they been doing it? I just ask again that you think very carefully what your goals are. Is it to usher small business out of business? Is it to increase your unemployment rate? Is it to create vacant buildings downtown again? Or is it to limit how much money we can make? Or do you want to bring additional revenue to downtown Suffolk? Fulfill employment, recreation, and citizen of Suffolk? And is to be socially supportive and financially sound city? And that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other, any other speakers to speak during the rebuttal period in favor of this ordinance?
I'm Carolyn White, forty-two sixteen Coltrane Avenue, City of Suffolk, Pewsville, Virginia. Hallelujah. I'm here tonight because I, it's like deja vu. I remember this couple back in the twenty nineteen. You all were here then, right? I sat right over there and listened to the same stuff that's going on now. If you all said you're gonna fix your ordinance, it's time to fix them, Kevin. Don't bring one in here and give them satisfaction, then do another one the opposite. Time to get your ordinance together. From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, I remember them. Why don't you? It's time to do something. Like you said, Vice Mayor, right is right. If you're gonna do for one, do for the other. She, you said you near them, you can look out for them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Karen Two, owner, High Tide. I just want to say that I would like to support Renee's as a nightclub in the downtown area. I think that we need to have more than one or two or three. I think that we need to have some consistency, um, and that we need to be able to all have good business, um, and work together and to make our, our city vibrant.
I agree. My name is Ashley Jackson. I'm from four thirty-two Robin Road. Um, I'm very familiar with the city. I'm not from here, but I really respect the city of Suffolk. Um, I'm familiar with a lot of people in here. Um, Renee's Restaurant, I've been familiar with before she even opened over here. I love her to death then. Um, I've done parties for her. So I support all the DJs and the live entertainment. It's all good for Suffolk. It's gonna bring good ordinance to everybody, and everybody should support, support each other and be happy with each other's restaurants and not have any bad, you know, vibes. So that's all I'm gonna say. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, we got thirty-two seconds.
Well, hello, Pamela Brandy, uh, and I'm representing Pewsville, but I'm gonna speak on this because the first time that I came here, which is in, back in nineteen, uh, at the time, it was the Bed and Breakfast with them. They did the same type of entertainment and all, and you all granted the Bed and Breakfast and denied them after they did the, uh, um, the repairs and the things that you all told them to do. My concern is this, again, we need to talk about fairness to all. And again, we talk about growing the city and making it livelier good and a place for people to come. The people are already coming. The problem is y'all can't get your ordinance and your times and all straight. However, we all here to work together. We all are a community. We all are looking at being able to, um, have some livelihood and different entertainment going on in downtown Suffolk and other places. But we talking about Suffolk right now. So I say, let them, let all business work, get your ordinance, your times, and be the same across the board for all and not be divided. And I think that helped your thirty-two minutes because three is the Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost, and two is the number of witnesses. Be blessed.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And that concludes our rebuttal period. This public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion would be in order. Councilman Ward.
Oh, wow. Are you aware how many restaurants, bars, whatever you call, have live entertainment in Suffolk now?
Uh, no, not off the top of my head.
Explain again, what's the difference in live entertainment and DJ?
Yeah, so, uh, live entertainment is when you have a band, a DJ, um, uh, some sort of performer that's live there, uh, generally using some sort of amplified system. Um, that's kind of what differentiates, uh, live entertainment. Um, it falls right now under our nightclub definition. So that's, that's the most comfortable home we have for someone who wishes to have live entertainment in their restaurant establishment. Uh, so, uh, within, uh, throughout the city, uh, whether it's the B two district, CBD, um, in order to operate, um, with live entertainment, um, you are classified as a nightclub, which requires a conditional use permit.
Okay. So she can have live entertain, she can't have live entertainment, but she can have a DJ. She can't, or she can't have neither one?
No, they, they can obviously, um, live entertainment No, they can obviously, live entertainment does not include what they could produce within their own speaker system right now as our ordinance defines it.
And these other clubs that they mentioned, did they have either one live entertainment DJs before?
Uh, other clubs?
In the same building she's in?
Mm-hmm.
Did they have live entertainment or DJs before she became Renee's?
Uh, there was previously, I can't speak to, I think Boogie's was the most recent operation there. Generally, our zoning department works on complaints. If they receive a complaint, they'll go investigate and issue a notice of violation. The last use that had a conditional use permit there was the Comedy Club Fat Cats. Under these very similar conditions, they received city council approval for. My understanding is I don't believe that operation ever began.
Okay, so now what we saying, I think one time council, it might have been Mayor Doeman, did they have a permit to have live entertainment or DJs before? Is that the business or the building? How do y'all?
Uh, so conditional use permits are property specific. So going back to Fat Cats, that would have been for this property. However, there's a sunset clause. If the business, one, doesn't open within two years of its approval, it's null and void. Additionally, if there were previous operations in this building that did have a conditional use permit, granted, there are none that I'm aware of other than Fat Cats, and there had been a two-year gap in that, anywhere, it becomes null and void. Thus, it needs, constitutes the need for a new conditional use permit.
So it was a time period, you're saying?
Yes, sir.
But the building don't change. If we gave it to one, the building don't change, but the business do, right?
Yeah, the use that the building is going to be utilized can certainly change. There are a variety of uses that are permitted within our various zoning districts throughout the city.
I just want to clear something up really quick here. What we're basically here for with this ordinance is a compliance issue, correct? I mean, they were having entertainment in the building before they had the CUP to do it and were caught and said, you can't do this anymore. And when, whether they knew they were doing it, didn't know they were doing it, this is simply compliance. All we're actually going to do here tonight, if we approve this, is allow them to be a nightclub, which is what they'd like to be, and offer live music and under rules and regulations like we do for anybody that wants to have a nightclub. Is that kind of what we're doing? Kevin, I'm putting you on the spot, sorry.
Yeah. Once again, we issued a notice of violation in March.
Right.
Telling them that they had come to the city's attention, they were having live entertainment, not in compliance with their unified development ordinance, and now they are seeking permission to do that legally.
Okay, so very similar to the one we just approved earlier tonight. So despite what the world thinks about us, I've never known this council to do anything except the right thing for everybody in this city. I'm sorry, guys, but we are not prejudiced against any people. We are prejudiced against Suffolk because we want Suffolk to be successful, and we want the people that live here to be successful. So it seems to me, of course, we're going to approve this tonight because we want them to be successful, and we want everybody to do what we asked them to do to make the city a better place. And I think by putting these rules in place, Kevin is simply doing his job and fairly new at it, so you're on a learning curve as well. But I think this is the right thing to do at this point, to set some guidelines, let people know what we expect, and then live by. And then when we screw up, we'll get called out on it. But I don't even know what we're talking about up here tonight. To me, this is just an obvious, of course, we're going to allow them to have this nightclub and to be successful, and hopefully move into the other two buildings on the sides and do it in such a way that we're all proud of our downtown. I said it once before, and I'll still say it, I am excited about where our downtown is heading, and I know the people here are excited. But we have to do it in such a way that we all can live together, we don't get out in the street and do fighting if that's what's going on downtown. I don't get down there that much, I guess. But my point being, I wish them the most success, and I think as a council, of course, we're going to, we need to see this thing move forward. So with that, I'd like to put forth a motion to approve the, what we're actually doing is offering them a conditional use permit and to play within the guidelines that everybody else is because we all play in the same guidelines. With that, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Johnson, and I, again, support live entertainment in downtown Suffolk. But to Ms. Townsend's point, from personal experience, I know that there is live music going on around the city of Suffolk. So I would refer back to what the Vice Mayor said during the last public hearing. We need some sort of fairness in the way that we're enforcing this. And again, if we're only going on complaints, that's maybe not the best system. But if, whether or not people are offering live entertainment and don't know that they have to have a conditional use permit, or they do know and they're doing it, you know, I just think that we need to have a more fair way of identifying what's going on within the city. And again, I'm a fan and I support it, but if you have to have a conditional use permit to have live music, we need to make that known, and we need to make everyone that is operating that way to have a conditional use permit so that the playing field is fair and level. So to Ms. Townsend's point, I think, you know, I don't know that she's been particularly singled out, but I do think that we're not enforcing that evenly across the downtown area. So, but again, support live music, support the conditions that we have here, and I would like to second Councilmember Johnson's motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate again my comment with the other condition use permit. And that's been my whole thing with everything that we do, is do it fairly, and what's good for one is good for all. I don't think it should stop on East Washington Street. West Washington Street, it should go across the city. So when somebody come in to get a permit, they'll know what is required and what they can and cannot do, and that's for everyone. So it will be fair to everyone regardless of where you're coming from, what you're doing. So that is my whole take with all these that have come before us and that will come after this, is I just want to make sure that we are doing the same thing with everyone. I want the policy to be in place wherein it takes care regardless of who it is. When they come up, we're going to treat everyone the same regardless of who you are, where you came from, or where you're going. So that's my comment, and that's what I stand by, and that's what I live by. I will not discriminate against anyone for any reason. I want everyone to be treated the same and fair.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question. Hours of operation for Renee's are going to be the same as High Tide?
Thank you.
Is that correct? Everybody's going to be treated the same?
Yes, the main hours. The High Tide had the component of the outdoor entertainment as well. That's not included in this one.
Right.
But the hours of operation will be the same.
Be the same.
As recommended, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Yes, have a question.
Yeah, I must as well stay up there.
My question to you, I understand that we're talking about the Central Business District right now. Does the same thing apply Northern End of Suffolk? If someone was to come here and want to do the same thing on the Northern End as the Central Business District downtown, we want to make sure that the same thing applies across the entire city. Is that what we're talking about now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we get any other questions and comments? We do have a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilperson Butler Barlow for approval of the conditional use permit as presented. I do have a couple of comments before I call for the vote. Once again, I think we need to maybe clean up, if you will, some of the issues concerning because there's a lot of ambiguity there as to exactly what is live entertainment. We need to know what live entertainment is. I think we should send it back to planning. We also need to possibly look at our parameters where a restaurant is operating as a restaurant and wants live entertainment would be classified as a restaurant seeking a conditional use permit for live entertainment rather than a bar and lounge. And I just think we need to have planning, maybe their committee on ordinances address that. So we do not have as much confusion, just like we did, you know, earlier. You know, we need to have it standardized so applicants know what live entertainment, the definition of live entertainment without any questions, be it a DJ, be it a band, be it a boombox or whatever it is, however we're going to define it. And that's all I'll say about that. In regards to treating everybody the same, I mean, absolutely, everybody gets treated the same. But at the same time, we got to understand they don't call these things conditional use permits for a reason. They call them conditional use permits because each one has to stand on its own. When we say treat everyone the same, is we should treat everyone exactly the same under the same circumstances. So that does not mean or infer that every restaurant that comes forward and wants a conditional use permit for live entertainment, we're automatically going to grant it because everybody gets treated the same. We need to put it in a proper context because of the location may be different, not that the individuals are different, but each conditional use permit must stand on its own merit. Otherwise, you would just amend the code to allow it under certain, it wouldn't even be certain circumstances, you would amend the code to allow that activity in a particular zoning district, and it would be allowed by right. So just to clear the air there, you know, we've got fair and equitable, and then we have different situations. But future applicants need to understand that conditional use permits have to stand on their own merit, but we absolutely have to treat everyone fair in similar circumstances. So with that being said, and once again, I'm going to bring it up, I brought it up, we talked about number 11, we talked about 12, this is a conditional use permit. In the same way with High Tide, you know, I am rooting for nothing but success. I want to get to 2:00 in the morning as fast as you want to get there, but we're going to get there when the timing is right. We are going to get there, just like I said before, when we have code enforcement, when we have lights, when we have cameras, when we have a police presence, and we have the ability to address any situation that may come up because we do not want to have to react to circumstances and then say, whoops, I guess we did it too much, and now the perception of our downtown is not what it needs to be. Those folks that live downtown, those folks that have been in our city for years, I mean, we want to be able to walk downtown. Everybody wants to be able to go downtown and shop and go to restaurants and go to activities. You know, we're getting ready to spend a lot of money downtown, and I don't think anyone's going to recognize what downtown looks like in the next 18 to 24 months. By the time we do the library, by the time we take down some old buildings, by the time we get our festival center, the perfect scenario, the perfect scenario is we have events at that festival site, and when that event is over, people don't get in their cars and go home, they get in their cars and they go to a restaurant. They go shopping. One feeds off the other. So we just have to make sure that we've got our act together and we're doing everything the right way. I appreciate everyone's investment in downtown. Being in business, I mean, it's, being in business is no joke. For people who haven't been in business and worry about making a payroll and dealing with everything they have to deal with every day, don't really appreciate what entrepreneurs do, and especially the restaurant business. You know, before I was in the car business, I was in restaurant business. I worked at Shoney's Flipping Hamburgers for a couple of years, but, I mean, the restaurant business is tough, just like the car business. It's 10, 11, 12 hours a day. You know, that restaurant might not be open, but you're busy, you're ordering food, you're prepping stuff for the day, you're counting your stuff, you're figuring out, and then you hold your breath and you make sure enough folks come through the door before your food goes bad or whatever. So I appreciate the fact that you're downtown, and I want you to succeed. This noise thing, I mean, I am very, very, very concerned about the noise thing, simply because it is what it is. It does not take much to violate this noise ordinance. Another thing I'm concerned about is the number of people. I mean, during the planning commission, I heard a little thing about, you know, we could have 100 people there. Well, if you have 100 people in an establishment with an occupancy capacity of about 50, I think the rest of them are going to roll out on the street, and that's where we're going to have an issue. So I want everyone to succeed. I want everyone to be, I mean, do it all. But please, 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 do what you can to adhere to all the conditions of the conditional use permit because these things are going to be under a microscope. We are, I look at Norfolk, we have some regional meetings, we've had regional meetings, I've been with the manager, and we talk about safety issues and whatever. And you can pick things up from other cities. And I look at Norfolk, you know, Norfolk's got a fairly vibrant downtown, but they had a pretty major issue a couple of months ago. Stuff kind of hit the fan, it was all over the news, and it was, you know. So how do we learn from that? We can learn from other localities' mistakes, or not necessarily mistakes, but issues that they have to contend with. So that's what I want to do. We need to learn from the other localities, and we want to be proactive in what we're doing so we don't have to be reactive to some type of event that we'd rather not see. So with that being said, I'm done. Oh, Councilman Fawcett, I forgot all about you. You out there? There you go.
No, I'm good, Mayor, go ahead.
I'm going to get, Andy, if we're not looking at that screen, if you would keep Councilman Fawcett out there, you know what they say, out of sight, out of mind? Nothing personal, but, you know, I get carried away. So now we all see you. Yes, sir, have you got any comments?
No, sir, I'm good tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I apologize.
That's okay.
With that being said, we got a motion on the floor for approval of the ordinance as presented, seconded by Councilperson Butler Barlow. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Doeman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one with Councilmember Goldberg voting in opposition.
Okay, our next public hearing is the ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an accessory dwelling unit detached on property located at 3708 Knott's Creek Lane, zoning map 12, parcel 55M, account number 301412000. This is CUP 2022-10. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, Mr. Wine's at the mic for us for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor. This is a conditional use permit to establish an accessory dwelling on property located at 3708 Knott's Creek Lane. The property is zoned RLM, residential low, medium density, and the part of the northern growth area, inner ring suburban use district. As I noted, the property is zoned RLM, residential low, medium density district, and it's surrounded by the RLM zoning district on all sides, to the north and to the east, west, and south. It is located in pretty close proximity to some B2 property there closer to Bridge Road to the south. This is the proposed location for the accessory dwelling. I have a couple more slides where I will discuss this a little bit further, but it would be a garage with an apartment on the second floor that would be utilized for the applicant's mother-in-law, and it would be about 833 square feet. Here we have an aerial of it. It shows the proposed detached garage, 48 by 32 square feet there to the east and north of the house that is located on the site. That is a one-story house that's approximately 2,900 square feet. Here we have some renderings of it. Like I said, it's a proposed garage with a second-story apartment. It would have, consists of a bedroom, a living room, and a bathroom. And there would be a bathroom on the bottom floor as well in the garage. So the planning- So the planning commission, at their meeting, reviewed this application and they're recommending approval by a vote of seven to zero with the conditions in staff's report. Additionally, staff has looked and evaluated this application in accordance with our supplemental use standards for accessory dwellings and our conditional use permit criteria, and we are recommending approval as well. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
How we doing this evening? I'm Christopher Sutton, I'm the resident at 3708 Knott's Creek Lane, just trying to build a garage and with apartment above for my mother-in-law so I can get her out of my house. Oh, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do you have anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone else to speak in opposition? Is your mother-in-law here? Do we have anyone else to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, what is your pleasure? Councilman Goldberg.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval, Councilman Goldberg. Councilman Ward.
Second.
A second from Councilman Ward. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
No.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams. Stepped out. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to one with Councilmember Fawcett voting in opposition and Councilmember Williams is out of the chamber at the time of the vote.
Okay, our next public hearing is an ordinance to amend chapter 31 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Article 6, Design and Improvement Standards, which is section 31, 612, Street Improvement Standards, OTA 202201. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mr. Wine will provide a staff report on this item also.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is an ordinance text amendment that we discussed during our housing overview series over several council meeting work sessions and regular sessions. And something that came from this body nearly a year ago at this point for us to take a look at, and we discussed it with our committee on ordinances and ultimately landed on making modifications to two provisions within the Unified Development Ordinance related to our street improvement standards. That's section 31, 612 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Presently, our ordinance regulates or requires that a variance to cul-de-sac length standards be approved, or they could be approved administratively by the director. Depending on the zoning district you are located within, the lower that cul-de-sac length gets. For instance, in our agricultural zoning district, it's 1,000 feet, and that goes all the way down to 300 feet in our more dense residential districts such as the REU, which is a pretty prominent one, RM as well. So what we found is that generally, when someone is seeking a variance from one of our street improvement standards, primarily secondary access, and the other being connectivity, which we talked about at length, generally, they're also seeking the cul-de-sac length variance. And variances to those sections that I mentioned, connectivity and secondary access sits with council as the approving authority. As such, staff thought that this would be an appropriate time to switch that responsibility back to city council. So that's one of the changes we're talking about. And the second one is our secondary access. Presently, we require that for subdivisions of 25 or more lots, they provide a secondary access point, public access point off of a public road, existing public road. Staff is recommending, for a variety of reasons that I'll touch on, that that be increased from 25 to 30 units. The primary purpose there is that that aligns with fire code in what they require for single-family units. So a secondary access must be provided at 30 units. So we thought it was logical to align the two. So we've discussed these at length with our committee on ordinances and we briefed you all during a work session back in April on this. The planning commission, they've evaluated this at their May 17 meeting and they're sending it to you with a recommendation unanimously that it be approved. That concludes my presentation on this topic. I'll be happy to address any questions you have at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Once again, Mr. Wine, before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening again, I'm Carolyn White from Pewsville. And I missed a whole lot last time, but I do remember, and I did go back and look at my video, and Mr. Wine and Mr. Lewis was here and they were talking about paper streets and they were also talking about cul-de-sacs. They were talking about doing the 50 feet wide for the streets. So I just want to bring you up some information because I know sometime when we want to go back and review stuff, we might forget. But I have an ordinance that was done to do these streets, I mean, an ordinance to amend chapter 31, UDO, All Its Code for the City of Suffolk, Article 3, and the procedures. Well, this was done March 2019. Most of you were here then, but you probably forgot. So now you're getting ready to do it again. And this is what I'm looking at, deja vu, all over again. See, when we do these little piece of anything's and then come back and trying to stretch and add something else or change it, and versus going and looking at the entire thing and making your recommendations, then you got to come back again. So I'm looking at, if you all don't take your time and look at this ordinance, 31, section 612, what have you, Article 6, then you're going to be back next year with the same thing. So my thing is too, I looked in some things they mentioned about the Pewsville paper streets. Mr. Wine said on May 4 session that there was another area that had paper streets. He gave you a nice little video and he listed drivers as one of them, but then he realized that that was a parking lot with just gravel on it, wasn't a paper street. They had that in front of their business so that people could drive up and wouldn't be in puddles, but it wasn't a paper street. Now, the plot, plot one for Pewsville listed all the streets, and I think I remember giving you all, sending, emailing you all a copy of 22 paper streets or more in Pewsville that people are still paying taxes on and can't use them. So in this ordinance, if you don't do what you're going to do now and take care of everything, you're going to come back again because the builders are already building on the paper streets. You all saw that, I sent you pictures. And they're still coming. I'm sure Mr. Wine is getting inquiries every day because the builders are there, the developers are there. There's 22 to 23 streets where they can build homes on, so they will be back. So my thing is now, before you pass this ordinance and have to go over it again and redo it again maybe next year, maybe you need to settle down and look at it. Some of you never been to Pewsville, I know that. I know when they wrote the article in 2019 when Mr. LaRue wrote the article about, people were confused about paper street. We weren't confused, we lived there, born and raised there, used to run through each street and come around, and he said cul-de-sacs? We didn't have no cul-de-sacs because every street intertwined with another. Talking about secondary streets, those are secondary streets, streets that supposed to have been maintained by the city. I heard Mr. Robert Lewis say in the work session that Lou asked the question, he said, "Those streets belong to the city."
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, they belong to the city. My time's up already.
It was up about a minute ago, but I'll, but I'll like you.
Well, guess what? I'll be back with knowledge in the speaker and I'll continue, thank you.
All right, we have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public, whoop, we got one coming. Almost, ma'am. I was getting close.
Hello again, Pamela Brandy in Pewsville again. It's just amazing that as I sit and listen, and I keep hearing repeats of the same information. We talk about our ordinance that you all have and how you have to amend them, you change them. We talk about, you know, making sure that we doing everything correct in the same manner, we doing the researches on what's going on with paper streets, what's going on in different areas. However, it seems that as you keep making these changes, the changes are about the same information that you never got straight the first time. And we, you know, talked about before that, hey, you know, we made a mistake, we overlooked some things from city council and we going to do things better. How about just really taking the time to look at your ordinance, putting them in the right perspective, right manner, the right words, understanding for not only for the residents to understand, but you yourself understand. Work with your department planning and all the different department that works to try to make sure that the things are correct. The paper streets in Pewsville, they have been recently, homes that have been built by developers on the paper streets, and there are a lot of residents that have continued to say that they have been paying taxes on their property but cannot build, but yet on the corner of paper streets, builders are building homes. We talked about that most of these homes are going to military residents, and they not understanding what's going on in the area that they're building homes, but the elderly and the people that have been living there for years understand. So let's really take the time to look at the concerns and the issues that are going on in Pewsville and these paper streets that have been going on for years. So as you all continue to build up, take the time to look at the true history and facts of what you're doing so no one have to continue to come back and say, city council, you're not doing things in the right manner. There's an error that's being done by you all. It would be very helpful to make sure that when you change your ordinance, you fully understand what you're doing. That way, when you try to explain it to the residents, we all know and we'd be on the same page and we won't continue to repeat, repeat. But at some point, we should be able to address the issue and completely solve it instead of continue to have it to go on for years and years and years and years. I thank you.
Thank you. Get our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in regards to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wine, would you come up a minute again, please? Talk to me about the 1,000 feet or the 300 feet of distance again. I think we've had problems with that before and I want to get a little better explanation of that.
Yes, sir. So depending on what zoning district you are in, in which a subdivision will be developed and I guess the longest maximum available cul-de-sac length in the city is 1,000 feet long before, before it either has to cul-de-sac and go back or loop. And that would be in our RE and RR zoning districts where major subdivisions are permitted. Agricultural zoning district, it's not permitted, but the ag is part of that table as well. And that progressively gets shorter depending on the density of a residential zoning district. So the next least dense is your RL, that's residential low density and RLM. And if memory serves, don't quote me on this, I believe it drops to 800 feet there, and then it gets as short as 300 feet in our more dense districts. So you're talking RR M, residential medium density and REU. That's primarily where we see the issue with major subdivisions.
Let me ask you this. Do you ever take in consideration, let's say you're in a dense area and you're talking about 300 feet, a better design to help the neighborhood and maybe, maybe to get the better design, you're 320 feet as opposed to 300 feet. Do you have any flexibility of taking that, look at the design and see if the design is better, going the extra 20 feet or 50 feet as opposed to just holding firm on the 300 feet?
I believe the purpose of a lot of these design standards are to foster a good design of a neighborhood. So the way the ordinance is structured now, if they cannot meet those minimum requirements, there is a relief mechanism and that's a variance. Right now, it sits with the director who would have to evaluate it against variance criteria, which is not easy to demonstrate. Generally, you're talking about topographic conditions of a property or environmental concerns. So going back, I guess, to the heart of your question, good design is supposed to be fostered by the development standards we have in the ordinance.
Well, I have a problem with you, with that not really being performed in some areas that I've seen in which engineers have looked at it and said, this is a great design, doing it this way, and we, we hold to only the 300 feet and it makes it even difficult for some people to get out of their driveways. They have highways or roads coming in front of their houses a little closer than normal because the design, you can't, you have no flexibility. Would this ordinance change any of that? Would you have any flexibility with doing that?
I know, will not change that.
Thank you.
Counsel, other questions, comments, or a motion? Mr. Manager?
Councilman Goldberg, real quickly though, what this does do, if I'm correct, Kevin, is bring the, there is a variance, a variance itself would then reside with council and not administratively at that point.
Once again, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Don't everybody jump up at one time. I can't do it. There we go. All right, Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
We got a motion for approval. Councilman Williams, Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam, oh, Councilman Fawcett, have you got anything that you would like to interject, sir?
No, I was going to second the motion, but that's okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we got a motion on the floor and a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we now move to ordinances. We have an ordinance authorized in the city to participate in a firearm buyback program and destroy surrendered firearms. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, there is a revised ordinance at your dais, should be, which is... and destroyed by the police department consistent with Virginia law removing unwanted guns off the arteries ensuring a safer community." It's been, uh, revised to say, "Whereas such surrendered firearms shall be received and destroyed by the city or an authorized agent." But going on down to item two under therefore, item two previously, the police department is authorized to receive and destroy such firearms, it now says the police department and sheriff's office are hereby. So I just wanted to point out those two, uh, corrections, uh, language corrections in the proposed ordinance. With that, um, I believe, uh, Chief Chandler will be doing the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, as you know, firearms in the wrong hands have been an issue in our local area based on the increased violence. We believe some of these weapons used in some of this criminal activity have been stolen. From January first to June eighth of this year, we have had thirty-two aggravated assaults, um, and that should say six, six homicides in our city. So far this year, we've confiscated a hundred and sixteen guns connected with criminal activity. I'm before you today requesting that we consider an ordinance to allow a gun buyback event The objective of this event is to provide citizens with a way to safely discard unwanted firearms. Citizens will receive a gift card in exchange for weapons. This is a step towards trying to keep guns out of the wrong hands. The way we are proposing this works, and this will be in, in collaboration with some other things such as, um, uh, being able to have gun lock giveaways and as, as well as trying to provide some, uh, gun safety training opportunities. Police will provide containers to store the weapons and clearing barrels so the weapons can be unloaded safely. A separate entity would conduct the transaction with the citizens on our behalf. At the conclusion of the event, the police department would maintain possession of the weapons, and they would later be destroyed. The weapons would not be processed for fingerprints or DNA. These weapons would not be used in criminal prosecution. The only investigatory step we will be, we will take is to ensure that the weapons are not reported stolen. In the event that firearms, uh, that is turned over to police are found to be stolen, the police department will make attempts to return that weapon to the rightful owner rather than to destroy it. This program is not expected to aid in solving crimes, however, this program maybe could avoid a future crime. If, the, the point behind this is if it takes one firearm, just one firearm out of the hands of a potential law violator, I believe it's worth it. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Council questions or comments?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, Chief. I, I do have a question, and that question is, when a citizen turn in their weapon, are they required to give any type of personal information?
No, the, the point, the point is getting the weapons that shouldn't be off the street. Um, this is not about requiring anybody to give any information or anything like that. This is not about us trying to find out who's giving the guns away. You have people, and, and oftentimes, it's not, it, it may not be the, I don't expect the, the law violator to come and bring their gun. However, there are people who have guns. It may be a gun that doesn't work anymore, that could be used in a robbery. It may be a piece of a gun that can be put with another piece of a gun that they don't use. So the, the main point is to get whatever guns we are that could potentially fall in the wrong hands, um, into a safe place. This is in no way to, to try to identify any person or what gun they bring.
One other question. The, um, buyback program is voluntary. It's not something that, um, we're, we're forcing anyone to do. It's totally based on the citizen bringing the weapon because they want to do it, and it's not something that we're trying to force them to do.
Absolutely. If, if we don't have any citizens that say, "Hey, I want to get rid of this gun," then we will walk away from this event, hopefully maybe having the opportunity to educate someone on the way to properly lock a gun or give them information on where to go and receive training on how to properly use a gun. Um, this is not about forcing anyone to do anything, but if we have citizens, and I liken it to, um, very simply, we have, uh, these, uh, basically mailboxes in the precincts for drugs, where people can come and bring their drugs and put them in the box. We don't try to find out who it is. We just try to get drugs off the street that shouldn't be out floating around, whether that's prescription drugs or anything else. This kind of works the same way. It's not about we're trying to make anyone give up their guns or anything of that nature. I wouldn't be a part of that. Um, this is simply about anyone who would like to. It's totally voluntary.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
The gift cards, is there a certain amount that you have placed on the gift card per gun, or this is something that's gonna be discussed at a later date?
I thought Manager was gonna say something.
Oh, well, I can't. Now, this, this is not for one specific event, the, the ordinance in front of you. It's allowing us to have these type of events, and really, it's, we're there to assist with the event. There's someone else who would be doing their gift cards and everything else, so they would be up to them on the value that they would put on that card.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Fawcett?
Hey, thank you for seeing me. Okay. A couple of questions, and, um, I just had a couple of calls today in regards to this buyback program. I think the main concern is for us to try to identify who in fact is going to be the organizers of these buybacks. Um, that's one question. Two is, concern was, have we appropriated any money that the city's going to expend being part of this buyback program, program? And three, with the short of resources that we have already in the police department, they're looking at, here we go, we're gonna use police time. Is that gonna take an officer off the street? We're gonna pay overtime? How are we gonna have that officer there in the exchange? So there is some questions from the public out there that, that happened to come and land in my lap today. So this is just a couple of questions that I had that need to be cleared up for the public so they understand what we're doing here.
Okay, um, if you don't mind, if, I mean, I wouldn't mind responding to some of that. I've spent quite a few minutes and hours researching, uh, the buyback program. As the manager said, this particular ordinance is just an ordinance to allow us to conduct this type of activity. It is not event-specific. So when you talk about what hour is it gonna be, where it's gonna be, I don't know, I still don't know, because that hasn't been decided yet. So it's an ordinance that the state mandates that a locality pass to allow this type of activity, and that ordinance is eighteen point two dash three oh eight point two, colon, In regards to the cost, because I've been getting some of those phone calls too, uh, the particular, I guess the catalyst behind all this is, I mean, I received a, a phone call from a group, it's actually the Hampton Roads Black Caucus, who has conducted some of these buybacks. Uh, they're getting ready to do their second or third one in Virginia Beach. They've got a couple in Chesapeake. They've done a few in Portsmouth, and they said, "Mayor, we would like to come to Suffolk and do a buyback program, as like we've done in some of the Hampton Road cities. What do you think?" And I said, "Well, you gotta tell me something about it. I, I don't know." And of course, I've been through the learning process and gotten some pretty good advice from some folks that I also know, uh, to see how they work. And the amount of money that is being expended for the gift cards, in, in this case, if this particular event comes about, costs the city nothing, uh, we do not fund any of the gift cards, so there is no tax money per se being expended for this program. I want to say that again. There is no tax money being expended for this program. In regards to personnel, the decision, the final decisions haven't been made, but we don't necessarily need a police officer there. We need someone there. Those individuals that are coming cannot legally accept those guns without creating a private transaction. So the only ones that can actually receive the weapons have to be authorized according to code, and the code says the sale of a firearm to an authorized representative. It just says authorized representative. So we as a city have the ability to authorize someone to be there to accept those weapons, which doesn't necessarily have to be a police officer. It doesn't say police officer. It says authorized representative. Could be a deputy sheriff, could be someone from the jail, anyone that we want, that we have confidence to be there, authorized representative of the Commonwealth or any subdivision thereof as part of an authorized voluntary gun buyback or give-back program. So there's gotta be some chain of custody for those weapons, and, and they cannot, there has to be someone authorized by us. So if we choose, if we choose, which we haven't done anything yet, but if we choose to allow an outside agency, organization like this to fund that and conduct it, we will still have to ensure that the process is being adhered to. Um, no, I do have, um, a question in regards, and I should probably brought this up before I actually looked at the ordinance, but it says, "Whereas such surrendered firearms shall be received and destroyed by the police department consistent with Virginia law," I believe that it needs to, what do we put in there? Uh, let me see. Destroyed by the city or an authorized agent. We got the authorized agent in there, but I don't believe that the word...
Sheriff's and police.
Okay, and we got sheriff and police, so that's good. But the problem I think we have with the ordinance is says destroyed. And by code, under section fifteen point two dash nine fifteen point five, it says, "The firearm transfer which is prohibited by fire shall be destroyed by the locality unless, unless the person surrendering the firearm requests in writing that the firearm be offered for sale by public auction or sealed bids to a person licensed as a dealer pursuant to eighteen U.S.C., blah, blah, blah." So I'm not sure we can put destroyed in there if there is indeed an option, an option for that individual in writing to request it to be put up for, for auction, and I'll, I'll defer to the city attorney. The state code says you got a choice.
That section could merely be amended to say that it will be disposed in accordance with section fifteen point two nine fifteen point five.
Yeah, I think that would definitely be more appropriate than destroyed. Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll make that amendment in there, so it, it would be disposed of in accordance to section fifteen point two dash nine fifteen point five. Also, in addition to this event that was proposed to me, um, this is not a, see how many guns we can get off the street scenario. I know the individual, the, the, the entity, the Hampton Roads Black Caucus, is also going to offer free gun, free trigger locks and free gun safety courses. So this is a scenario, this is a gun safety initiative. Gun safety initiative of which a buyback, if we do this, a, the buyback program is a part of that gun safety initiative. If you want to give your gun up that's been sitting in the house or whatever, if you want to give a gun up and get a fifty, a hundred, or two hundred dollar gift card, whatever to give it away, you've got that option. If you want to keep your weapon and you want a trigger guard for it, then you'll get a free trigger guard. If you have someone in the household or know someone else who needs a public safety course on firearms, then those are gonna be offered free also at different ranges throughout Hampton Roads. So I do not want to give the wrong impression, because I've been listening to it for three days, and it worked, this is not anti-gun, this is not, we're gonna see when we get off the street. I have learned a lot over the last couple of days. So this is a safety initiative. How effective are gun buyback programs? I mean, I got like thirty-seven pages right here. I read a report, have US gun back, buyback programs misfired, written by a bunch of PhDs and people know, especially know what they're talking about with a lot of statistics in it. And for the most part, they're not that effective. But the reality of it is, one less weapon on the street, preventing one death is worth every part of it. It's worth every bit of what we do. So every decision we make is what do we got to win and what do we got to lose? In this particular case, I don't think we got anything to lose. So hopefully, uh, Councilman Fawcett, that clears up what the questions were, but if you have another one, go ahead.
No, I, I, you know, I'm totally in support of a buyback program. Um, is it solve all our problems? No, but it, it is a good program, and it is being used throughout the different Hampton Roads cities, uh, and they've done a really good job with it. I just wanted to go ahead and make the motion to go ahead and approve the ordinance with the, um, verbiage amendment that you made. Um, I think you'll have to repeat that one, I, I lost it, um, but I'd like to go ahead and move forward to approve the, the ordinance to, uh, to go ahead and get involved in the buyback program.
Okay, thank you. So we got a motion from Councilman Fawcett, and maybe I'll defer to the city attorney again so we can reword the motion appropriately with the prior change along with the section change that will not mention, uh, destroying the firearm, but disposing the firearm in regards to eighteen, uh, in regards to whatever it was, yeah, fifteen point two dash nine fifteen five or state code or however it needs to be worded.
It would be, you would strike the word destroy and add disposed of such firearm in accordance with section fifteen point two nine fifteen point five of the Code of Virginia.
Okay. Councilman Fawcett, are you okay with that change?
Yes, sir. I, I think that's a great move right there.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you. I have just a comment, um, on a gun buyback is that I know there have been quite a few elder people and people that, uh, widers and whatnot have guns, but they didn't know what to do with them, and they wanted to get rid of them in some way, they wanted to do it in a safe way. So I think this is a good way that, uh, people that has those guns that be able to turn them in, and they know where they can bring them or take them to, to, uh, get rid of them rather than, they're afraid they're gonna get it in the wrong hands, just like you were saying. So I think it's a good, good, uh, purpose by doing that for people that need to get rid of guns, and just like I say, it keeps everyone more safer than somebody breaking on a house, stealing it, or whatever the case might be. So I support the, uh, the ordinance.
Would you like to second Councilman Fawcett's motion?
Yeah, I second Councilman Fawcett's motion.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett and a second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow? I mean, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we have no staff reports this evening. We do have a motion to schedule a public hearing on July sixth, twenty twenty-two to receive public comment on a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the non-exclusive master lease agreement with the Southside Network Authority, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
Move to schedule a public hearing as proposed.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson, a second from Councilman Goldberg, any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, our next motion is a motion to schedule public hearings, that being plural, for the July twentieth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting regarding authorizing issuance and sale of general obligation Public Improvement Bonds Series twenty twenty-two and Stormwater Enterprise Bonds. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
We got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilperson Rutler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilperson Rutler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rutler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is motion to, a motion to request the planning commission to review conditional use permit application schedules for existing uses requiring a permit. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Goldberg?
So moved, Mayor.
A motion for approval, Councilman Goldberg, Councilman Williams?
Second it.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? I do have a little discussion, I'd like to go on record. I know this is going to the planning commission committee on ordinances and what have you. This request is directly related to these conditional use permit issues that we are having specifically those individuals that are applying for conditional use permits after the fact. In other words, they are currently operating outside of code, they are operating when, without a conditional use permit. So what normally happens, I believe, and the manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but zoning administrator, whatever, will, it'll come to our attention and in most instances, almost all, unless it's a matter of public health and safety, we're not going to close anybody up. We're not going to say, oh, you need a conditional use permit, you've been in business for a year, we're going to lock the door, see you later, go get your stuff. We want to be able to let them, unless it's a public health or safety issue, let them continue to operate without closing them down. However, we have not had any specific timeframes on when this conditional use permit had to be obtained. So it was rather subjective. We've had people out there for a year and a half or more without conditional use permits. So my suggestion, and I want to make sure that this goes to planning commission with a certain degree of specificity, I think the word is. What I'm looking for is you're cited for operating in violation of ordinance that requires you to have a conditional use permit. You get a thirty day window to apply. Once your application is made, you have a hundred and twenty days to obtain your conditional use permit, which is four months, which is actually two extra months, two, you know, one to two anyhow. So that would give you time for a continuance if you needed to, or if the planning commission wanted to continue it, you wanted to continue it, but it's a hundred and twenty days. So now you get a hundred and fifty days. At that time, if you do not have your conditional use permit, everybody gets treated the same and we lock the door and say, go get your permit. When you get your permit, we'll allow you
Come back.
To come back and operate again. It's only fair to those businesses that are around them and everyone else that's adhered to the guidelines or may have an objection to what's going on, they need their time also. So that's just my recommendation. I just want to make sure that the message gets to the planning commission. I don't want it to be a solar farm, now we're not going to mess with it, you figure it out. That's not happening. We need to have something we can hang our hat on and more importantly, something that our citizens and applicants can count on that is specific. So it's not, well, I didn't hear from anybody, so it doesn't count and then it's a year later. So with that being said, I think we got a motion and a second. And if there are any other comments, if not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rutler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, July sixth, twenty twenty-two at four P M. unless canceled. And the motion would be in order.
So moved, Mayor.
Councilman Williams?
Second it.
Councilman Ward?
Second.
Oh, we already got a second? Who fit? Sorry about that. Got you. You beat a third. All right, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rutler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled, "Non-agenda speaker shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter." Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Carolyn White, forty-two sixteen Cold Rain Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville. Good evening, one more time. I just want to use my thought for tonight, I'm going to say that first in case my time run out again. It's coming from first John one, eight, nine, and ten. If we say we have no sin, we deceive ourselves and the truth is not in us. If we confess our sins, he's faithful and just to forgive us our sins and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness. If we say we have not, then we make him a liar and his word is not in us. Two things money can't buy: life and love. I talked about the session ordinance. I'm going now to what Public Works mentioned to you last meeting. Public Works said that they need someone to explain the two thousand and six devolution road takeover. If you all have read that, did you all need somebody to explain it to you? Because I can explain it to you. All right, nobody don't want to hear it? Okay. Then there was two devolutions. I got one from Suffolk, from the clerk's office, and I got one from VDOT. And the one from Suffolk was kind of blank. The one from VDOT had all the information, the actual contract. So if you need the original, let me know. Okay? And then you talked about paper streets in Nansaman County. So now you're saying that the streets that were for Nansaman County are going to be separate, different? So are we separate or are we equal? How can you determine to do Nansaman County streets different from the city of Suffolk streets? The tax money is the same, the stormwater fees we pay is the same with the increase this year. The Public Works manual is for all streets in Suffolk. The paper streets were not paper streets when they, when VDOT had them. They were secondary roads. The urban system of all streets in the VDOT system were to be done. Yet Suffolk and Chesapeake refused to do the streets and drainage as VDOT directed. Now, is that so complicated and hard to figure out during the contract? All right. Playing games will only cause more work for you to do. You have an investor in Pewsville doing the drainage, the stormwater drainage now? He's taking care of what the city said they were going to do back in twenty sixteen? I have a copy of the master drainage plan. If anybody needs to see that, I can get your copy. I also have an email from Mr. Hanson that he submitted to, to us stating that he know those easements weren't done by the property owner prior to cost investments. It was something that the city of Suffolk did without reimbursing the citizens. And then I heard Mr. Robert Lewis speak last month and said that most times there's a reimbursement up to ninety percent. Well, I guess he lost out because now cost of the investment's doing it. And he's going to be taken to court again, July the seventh. They keep continuing the case. Wonder why? So we got all the information that you need, freely give, just ask for it. If not, we're moving forward and taking that information elsewhere. Thank you, have a beautiful night.
Our next speaker is Travis McKinney, twenty-eight oh four Lake Cahoon Point, representing self regarding alternatives.
Hey, good evening. I didn't bring any notes, I'm kind of winging it because I just heard word of this new ordinance as far as the buyback programs. So the mayor saved me a lot of the effort. He said he's researched it. He says that he knows that these programs are ineffective. And I, I can't help but listening to the language that I'm hearing going on here tonight. You know, the police chief stood up, he made this remark, if we can find one gun, if we can just turn up one gun that could possibly not take a life, but you'll never be able to prove that. It's kind of like saying, if I could have just had that one shovel didn't bury Jimmy Hoffa. So the arguments that I hear don't make a lot of sense. You know it's ineffective, but you voted for it anyways. It gives me the impression it's more political or the optics, the city of Suffolk is trying to do something. But I didn't come here to really jump on that wagon. I came here to talk about alternative programs. And I'm glad to hear that this Hampton Black Caucus is also talking about trigger locks and gun safety classes. Now, I don't represent any of the organizations about the rattle off, the VCDL, NRA, National African Americans Gun Owners Association, Sportsman League, there's a ton of organizations out there that promote that same message as far as responsible gun use and preventing unauthorized users from accessing the gun. Because a lot of the guns are being stolen from homes, from cars and things like this. This is from an uneducated populace that doesn't know what to do with that handgun. You know, I deal a lot with the public, I do a lot of training with, with the public. And I understand what their perspective is. We all understand that crime and violent crime and all that's on the rise. We all see that, the perception is that you can't hide from that and that's happening. And one of the problems of stolen guns on the street is because you have a person who wants to be a responsible gun owner, is not educated on how to be a responsible gun owner. So we talk about alternatives. So the Hampton Black Caucus, I believe is the name of the organization, good on them if they're trying to talk about providing trigger locks and gun awareness. And this is what's something I was going to come propose to you is look to tie into other organizations. Let's look to the NRA, they have Eddie Eagle program, look to the Sportsman League. They all have programs on how you can educate your population for people who have, are responsible gun owners and how to better secure that firearm. In my classes, I talk about, you know, people talking about taking their guns in their cars and wherever they go. And I'd recommend a gun safe, if it fits underneath the car seat, it's, it's steel cabled, it takes the work of a magician to get that gun out of the car. Instead of securing it in the center console, the gun box, because the first thing a bad guy's going to do is go chase after the center, is going to look for the gun anyway. So I talk and educate people a lot, and at home safety, how to secure the guns from minors, how to prevent an unauthorized user. And all the programs that I reference to have these messages in set. So instead of challenging the NRA or challenging these organizations on second amendment rights and all the dogfight, we got to do something about gun violence, why don't we sit there and take a look at the messages that they actually do propose to the public and see if you can partner with these people as well? I am concerned about your gun buyback program. I didn't hear the ordinance talk about custody. I didn't hear it talk about what destructive methods, where are they going to be coordinated? I'm not sure you'll work all that out. I do understand the principle of having the gun buyback program, you know, you do have people who say, you know, I no longer wish to have this gun. Another reason why this program is going to fail is because of the new laws where I have to have a background check to sell a private gun to any individual. You've not created a really good black market for guns out there. Handguns in the black market are really expensive. The reason why this is also going to fail is because you're not addressing the criminal mindset when it comes to this. All criminal activity comes down to two things, power and selfish acts. All crime can be tied back to that. The power that they have and the selfish act is the reason why they committed those acts. You're not going to find Jesus tomorrow by putting your gun in a buyback program. You're not going to find guns coming out of the hands of persons with criminal mindsets. So that's the reason why these programs are ineffective. The first target you want to look at, and pardon the pun on that one, is responsible home gun ownership. What are all these people out here going to do with their handguns if they decide to take them out for a walk? How do they secure them and how you prevent an unauthorized user? That's where the messaging should start. Other alternative programs, let's talk about some of the violence, I'm, I said I'm winging it. But I don't know why or if you have any type of scared straight program. I don't know if you have any type of program where you can take some trustees and introduce them into some of the local youth in a five-on-five basketball game and have some type of night out with these type of people. So these people that are your hardened criminals can be listened to, to the youth and maybe prevent that youth from preventing, you know, committing a violent crime. That's the type of prevention I think you should be focused on instead of maybe that one gun that somebody might turn in, might save a life, which you'll never be able to prove. I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Next speaker is Garrett Waters, one oh five Babtown Road, representing self regarding current events.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of city council. My name is Garrett Waters. I reside at one oh five Babtown Road in Suffolk, Virginia. I know it's been a little while since I've been before you all, but I do believe enough time has passed to where I can speak to you truthfully about what's going on in our beloved city of Suffolk. We are witnessing a mass exodus of city employees, both in the safety realm and folks that work, you know, parks and wrecks and all this other stuff. And it's really coming to quite the head. The interesting thing I want to point out is a couple of things. Let's go right back to the beginning when there was an invocation right at the beginning and they mentioned the massacre in Uvalde during the invocation. What was not mentioned was that it took police over an hour to go in there and attempt to save human life. So that's a big deal. While, you know, my heart and my prayers are with the families that have lost their lives, why did it take the police almost an hour to go in in an attempt to save human life? So let's not lose sight of that. In addition, the children that were victims of that massacre, and I've looked in a lot of places, you can't find a birth certificate on any of these children. So is this a case of human trafficking, child trafficking? I'm not really entirely sure. But I'm going to hit you guys with a little bit of truth here this evening. The mass exodus of city employees has already begun. This leaves massive gaping holes in the safety and well-being of citizens of Suffolk. While my expertise lies in communicable disease in man, and I certainly can't speak ad nauseam regarding COVID and monkeypox and all this other stuff, there are more pressing issues facing the city of Suffolk. Our police need better equipment, they need load-bearing vests. They would greatly benefit from that, not only for their bodies physically, but for their very own protection. Now, the reason why these folks aren't getting these types of vests is because of perception, the perception that it's aggressive. But when these officers roll out to a neighborhood that has thirty or forty expelled rounds on the ground and you're worried about the perception of the police being aggressive, you really got to be kidding me right now. Forgive me, I lost my, my spot. Like McGruff said, we need to take a bite out of crime. It's difficult to take a bite out of crime when the police department is continually faced with organizational failures and lack of leadership. Has anyone heard of the vehicle break-in in the city of Suffolk in which a ballistic vest was stolen? Has anyone heard of the magazines with rounds that were stolen? And I also believe a pair of Air Jordans may have also been stolen. Has anyone else heard of any of that stuff? You know, the Suffolk Police Department comes out with a public service announcement to ensure your vehicles are locked at nine o'clock every night. It appears the only thing that could potentially be locked is a vehicle break-in, the report. So when are the elected officials for our beautiful city of Suffolk going to hold the appointed officials accountable? And now I know I had And now I know I haven't been here since like the fall and winter, you know, like a lot of things going on with life and trying to survive. Small businessman, family man, that kind of stuff. But when do we have appointed officials sitting up here with elected officials? If we have the police department represented, why don't we have the fire department represented? Just a couple of things that really make me scratch my head. In addition, at any time at night, usually, there's about three officers, three officers for all of Suffolk from 58 South. Three officers to respond to any type of crime, any type of emergency. Speaking of emergencies, when our fire department and emergency crews have to go to, say, a domestic violence situation because there could be injuries there, they have to wait sometimes up to 20 minutes for the police to arrive so they can go in and assess the situation and render any emergency aid. Basically, what we're allowing to do, God bless America, is if there is a domestic violence situation, our rescue personnel have to sit outside while there could be people very much inside, causing more harm, more damage, and could potentially be killing somebody. I have 30 seconds left. I really do like this clock, by the way. That's pretty nice. These are the other things that I noticed. I noticed when the chief was up here and he was asked a question, crickets. He didn't answer the question. Other people answered for him. That's very telling. Number two, his quote, "Not expected to prevent crime." This whole buyback thing, it's not expected to prevent crime. And the last thing I want to say is if a weapon is turned in and we're not doing any type of background checks on the people, that weapon could have been used in the murder and we're assisting in the disposition of a weapon that could have been evidence in a criminal case. Thank you. My time has expired. God bless America. Support the police.
Next speaker Pamela Brandy, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League. Regarding Pewsville.
Hello again. This has been a long night. However, back here again, and I am talking about Pewsville. It is amazing to me how many times we come out and speak about different things. I remember that you all came out and said how much money that you had in for Pewsville, set aside that's going to actually go into Pewsville. What I've seen recently is downtown Point Road, you all had workers come out and you took a section close towards Bellsville and dig the ditch deeper. However, where's the water going? Absolutely nowhere at all. Currently, you have blue flags and green flags on a certain section downtown Point Road. We have talked many times about what you all created with Chesapeake, which is the master drainage plan. Yet Suffolk hasn't did anything to take care of their part of this master drainage plans, which in fact that, you know, when Chesapeake and Suffolk met together, officials, Suffolk officials said that the master drainage plan no longer exists, yet you still have it and not doing anything. And it's because you all haven't did anything. Then you talk about in your ordinance tonight about expanding shoulder hill roads and 17 and all. It's amazing how you can continue to do work around Pewsville, but nothing in Pewsville. And why is it that a old problem can never get addressed and solved to be able to be completed? It doesn't make any sense to me. And I'm going to keep coming back, speaking out. I shall not be silent. But it is ridiculous to continue to listen to you all saying that you're doing what's in the best interest of your residents, but still have not. And people are asking a question, and I am still very concerned about our elderly. We have no sidewalks. There's no drainage or gutters in Pewsville. But every community that you all are building up, amazingly, you can put drainage, gutters and sidewalks there that had no drainage sidewalks or gutters at all, but you cannot figure how to do that in Pewsville? This doesn't make any sense to me. When are we going to actually look at our elderly and the concerns that they have, not just in Pewsville, but in Suffolk altogether? They are our foundation. And just because something is old does not mean that they lose their value or their worth. And if it was not for our elderly, we wouldn't be here ourselves. And some of us are already elderly too. We need to address the issues that at hand and take care of it. We continue to speak out about different things. I don't know how many times we're going to continue to say the same thing. I just want to know when you all are going to actually address it. I thank you. And I'm tired.
Our next speaker is Charlie Wiseman, 1500 Bridgeport Way, Unit 208, representing self regarding opportunities to combat cost of living increases and provide food sustainability efforts with the community garden.
Good evening. How are you doing? That was actually a lot that I wrote at nine o'clock this morning. I've actually been up since three. I am a operations manager currently. So a lot of my passion is in logistics, but the rest of my passion is in people. I've been born and raised in Suffolk, left a couple of times, come back. My degree is in sociology, so a lot of what I do care about is focusing on sustainability. And we have a problem with access to affordable and fresh food as a city, as well as a nation. South Suffolk specifically does not have adequate grocery stores and the cost of groceries is steadily increasing. For individuals with large families or living at or beneath the poverty level, there is a compromise between nutrition and hunger, where the cheapest option becomes the favorable one. We can alleviate that compromise with long-term planning and efforts while also introducing new ways to engage our community. And currently, we have a community garden at East Suffolk Rec that hosts flowers and some vegetation. However, an opportunity exists to provide more substantial land for sustainable farming. The proposed model will divide purchased land into lots available at a low cost, with five to 10% of the fruit and vegetables produced on the lot to be donated to a mandated food bank, while the remaining crops can be utilized with the discretion of the lot owner. We will partner with the local chapters of the Future Farmers of America, nursery owners and interested groups to provide education and skill training around agriculture. And I think this speaks a lot to the target areas for the city to protect the city's natural and agricultural heritage, as well as focus on the quality of life enhancements that were approved in the budget. If we're speaking to how we're moving resources around the city, one of my favorite places to visit is Lone Star Lakes. So the plot that we are currently looking at is on Galwin Boulevard. So that would be right before Lone Star. As we're also talking about public transportation, I think that would be a great opportunity to get people interested in moving around the city more. Specifically, the area on Galwin Boulevard would be 20 minutes from South Suffolk and 20 minutes from North Suffolk, putting it right in the middle of both sides of the city. Essentially, we would need to assess if that land is properly arable for growing. And if it is, I would urge the city of Suffolk to purchase this land on behalf of the community and allow an organization such as my own to manage a lease, to pay property taxes, monthly rental fees with any other contractual stipulations. Personally, I think this is a great opportunity to continue expanding. We already have one community garden that's serving one side of the community. But the more land that we can donate to these resources, that's an opportunity for families to work together, organizations to partner, the city to really show that we can give everybody the resources that they need to take care of themselves and their neighbors. And that's the part that I love the most about the city, and that's why I keep coming back. My passion is in my family that's been here for years, my friends and their families that continue to stay and build their families. So as long as I'm here, I want to make sure that we are able to provide something for the future, for the kids that go to schools, for the elderly, for everybody that is here in the city of Suffolk. I think that a more sustainable community garden would be a great benefit. So I will be leaving a few sheets to get distributed later, and I hope you guys give that some consideration.
Our next speaker is Hakeem Mohammed, 709 St. James Avenue, representing self regarding police reform. Our final speaker this evening is Tion Ashby, 709 St. James Avenue, representing self regarding civilian review board. That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there is one addition to this evening's agenda. Sarah Sugars has been nominated for reappointment to the Paul D. Camp Community College Board effective July 1st, 2022.
I'm sorry. Where did I miss? Let's see, a motion would be in order at this time. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Move for approval.
A motion for approval. Vice Mayor Bennett, Councilmember Williams.
Second that.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Any discussion of the motion? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams. Vice Mayor Bennett. Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Are there any new business items that require the action of City Council for consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments. At this time, I'll ask if Media and Community Relations Assistant Director Jennifer Moore has any announcements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council and City Manager. I am Jennifer Moore, interim director of Media and Communications. The Suffolk Police, oh, I've got to click. Sorry, it's new to me. Here we go. The Suffolk Police Department promoted 20 deserving individuals at a promotional ceremony held at Kings Fork High School on Monday, June 6th, 2022. The ceremony featured the promotion of one major, one captain, two lieutenants, six sergeants and 10 master police officers. The City Manager's Office is pleased to announce the selection of Dr. Kiriko, Charles Kiriko, as the City of Suffolk's Director of Information Technology. His start date is June 22nd, 2022. Dr. Kiriko has worked in the IT profession for 35 years with 20 years of experience in IT cybersecurity. And Dr. Kiriko received his Bachelor's of Computer Science and Master's of Business Administration from Old Dominion University with a PhD in IT with a specialization in information security from Capella University. And he is also a certified information securities manager. And he's taught graduate-level programs at Purdue Global University, as well as Kaplan University and North Central University. He's a resident of Suffolk and enjoys spending time with his pets. His hobbies include mountain biking, observing wildlife common to southeastern Virginia and the Great Dismal Swamp. Please, let's welcome Dr. Kiriko to our Suffolk team. Suffolk Public Library is celebrating Juneteenth and Black Excellence with the Juneteenth Black Excellence Expo, June 18th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Morgan Memorial Library. There will be a variety of activities for all ages, including making your own story quilt and a DIY family tree craft. The event will also host guest speakers and vendors. In addition to the expo, there will be several other events throughout the month of June, including a sip and paint and local author talk. All Suffolk Public Library Juneteenth events are free and open to the public. And to learn more, please visit SuffolkPublicLibrary.com. The Suffolk Department of Public Works advises of a transportation project to replace the bridge over Kingsdale Swamp on Elwood Road, Route 613, that will begin on June 24th, 2022. The bridge is anticipated to be reopened for traffic in spring 2023. Staff will continue to keep the public informed about the project's progress during construction. It's that time of year again for our National Night Out community kickoff. Community and neighborhood group leaders are welcome to attend and find out what this year's big event is all about, as well as register for the big night with Suffolk National Night Committee. Suffolk has a longstanding tradition of excellence with National Night Out and is ranked in the top 10 nationwide for over a decade in our population category, while being a recipient of five First in the Nation awards. This year's National Night Out event will be celebrated on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. And for more information, visit SuffolkNNO.com. The city of Suffolk will observe the Juneteenth holiday on Monday, June 20th, 2022, and city offices will be closed. Normal operations will resume the following day at 8:30 a.m. Trash and recycling collection will run as normal. Enjoy the Stars and Stripes Spectacular on July 4th as the skies of Suffolk light up with fireworks shows over the beautiful Nansen River at Constant Wharf Park and Marina. The park will open at 5:30 p.m. with entertainment, children's activities, merchandise vendors and a variety of food choices. The fuzz band will take the stage at 6:00 p.m. Fireworks show will begin at 9:00 p.m. for the entire family to enjoy. A reminder that the Suffolk 2045 Comprehensive Plan is underway. The Comprehensive Plan is a long-range guide for land use, housing, transportation, parks and open spaces, economic development and more. The Comprehensive Plan Feedback Survey is now live and the deadline has been extended through July 15th, 2022. The survey is available in English and Spanish. Community members can also pick up paper copies of the survey at all Suffolk Public Libraries or City Hall. Oops. And the online survey can be found at visiting Suffolk2045.org. A quick reminder that residents seeking COVID-19 vaccines are encouraged to visit vaccinate.virginia.gov or contact State Call Center to find out more vaccination locations available to them. And lastly, on your screen, there are a variety of ways for residents and businesses to connect to the city of Suffolk. And with that, I thank you and have a good night.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore. We'll go ahead and move to announcements from council. And Councilwoman Williams, you are up, sir. Let me hit your button. Where are you? There we go. Boom.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, if you would, I had a few complaints. There's a vacant lot next to 326 East Washington Street. The grass is overgrown, it's right there across the track. East Washington, once you cross the track. Also, I'd like to get an update on a request that was made on May 5th, 2022 regarding vegetation growing through a fence across from Knight Street located on Spruce and Colloden Street. Actually, it's much worse than it was. It's actually growing over into the street itself at this point, through the fence, on the fence. It's just really need to be cut back. I had the honor of attending Lakeland High School and Kings Fork High School graduation ceremony on Saturday, June 11th. I would like to let council and the public know that Lakeland High School had 196 graduates. Of that number, 65 students were honor graduates. Kings Fork had 327 graduates. Of that number, 149 students were honor graduates. Nazman River had 354 graduates. And of that number, 185 students were honor graduates. It's a great job. I would also like to give a shout out to my grandson, Kalik Fenner, who graduated from Kings Fork High School. Proud of you. My word for the month of June is congratulations. The words expressing praise for an achievement or good wishes on a special occasion. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. First, this morning, I attended the Workforce Service Council's board. They're doing just an excellent job of getting money coming in and grants coming in for workforce service. I hope we all taking advantage of that through our workforce services program here in Suffolk. They're doing an excellent job and they're growing. And it's very important about that because we're looking at the loss of employees, people leaving the area for the loss of jobs and losing people and trying to do things with more of the veterans and things of that nature to increase the jobs availability. And second, I think it's time to let everyone know. I've been asked a number of questions of whether I'll be running again in the next term. I'll be running again in the next term. I will not be running for a third term. I've decided not to do that, and wish whoever runs, wish them well. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ward.
Oh, yes. I also attended National River High School graduation in Old Dominion. It never get dull. It was so exciting to see the young high schools graduate, their emotions, and like you said, the wards and everything else. And it brings you back when sometime when you in high school, and then when your children, fortunately all of mine have graduated, but still, it's just something about a high school graduation. And now we just see if they can go a little further because their life just begun when you get a high school diploma. Like I said, I think they put on a great event, you know. The superintendent, Dr. Buck, and the rest of the school board did a good job in putting that together since they've been there a couple of years. Also, I attended a meet and greet with Elaine Lory, Congresswoman Elaine Lory, at Mr. Williams' location. He did a great job. A lot of people came. Some people were talking about it. Well-attended. I think he did an excellent job with meet and greet. Well, Councilman Goldberg, I have been hearing it, and knowing me, I like to hear from the horse's mouth. I just want to let you know that there've been up and down with me and you on council, but one thing about it, what I admire most, that you know real estate. And when you came out, some of the things you said to make sure that the City of Suffolk was well represented in the questions you asked about that. So unfortunate you is, but like I said, that's all about life, up and down. I know you for a while, and you'll be missed. With that, God bless.
Thank you. Councilperson Butler Barlow. There you go. Whoop, I had you for a minute. There you go.
Stop playing with it. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. First, I would like to offer condolences to the family of Dorothy Parks. Mrs. Parks was a longtime resident of Suffolk and passed away earlier this week at the age of 94, so sincere condolences to her family. On a lighter note, congratulations to all the graduates. It is an exciting thing to see the high school graduations. I regret that I was not able to attend, but wanted to congratulate the graduates of our city at any rate. And I also would be the first one to say Happy Father's Day this coming up weekend to all the men, whether you're a biological father or just represent fatherhood to someone. Hope you have a good weekend and a good celebration. And a special shout-out to my father-in-law, Joe Barlow Sr., and I will be spending some time with him this weekend. The last thing, and that's looking to this weekend, but looking ahead till July because we won't see each other before then, but I know that there are a lot of celebrations we heard about planned for the City of Suffolk for the 4th of July. Just want to say I'll hopefully be in Critten and Eclipse where the parade and the celebration will go on, I think, as usual, and looking forward to that and hope lots of folks will turn out for that, and look forward to seeing folks there. With that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Johnson.
Very brief. I'd want to thank the Holland Working Club for having me the other night. We had a nice discussion about the comp plan and where our city is heading, and I think we're going to have a lot of input from the folks in the Holland community. They were very excited. The Working Club, they wanted to make sure I came back to the city and said, "You don't know what a wonderful person you have in Teresa Earls." So Teresa has really worked with them and done a tremendous job. They just had a car show a couple of weekends ago and made a heck of a lot of money they're going to put back into the community, and they were very appreciative of the input from the city. The only other thing I'd like to say is, anyone going on 58, I know I keep harping it and probably will for the next two, three years, please have patience. The traffic moves, but it moves at its own pace. But don't not come out to see us every once in a while. Come out to the country. We're still out there. But do please be careful with the traffic on 58. It is, I know we're struggling as a city right now because there's so much, and it's a very difficult place for our citizens to be living right now. So think about them. Be safe. Look after your neighbors. With that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got a couple of things. Yes, Sunday is certainly Father's Day, and I wish that everybody out there would have a great Father's Day. For those of you that do have dads or maybe they're not here, don't forget them. Love your dads. Just like the moms, just don't forget your dad. With that, I appreciate everything tonight, Mayor, and I'm going to say good night.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say to Roger, it's good to see you tonight and the good report, so we still praying for you and wish you well, and hang in there. I would like to start out by saying I want to congratulate the two officers that was badged this week, and good to continue to recruit and getting more officers coming to the city. I think that's a plus that Chief Yu and his staff are trying to do more recruiting. I saw you even going to North Carolina and at Fort Bragg to try to do some recruiting down there. So that's great that you're reaching out in other areas other than just the tidewater area, trying to reach out to people. Also, I would like, I attended the National River High School graduation, and I would just like to say congratulations to all the graduates and all the scholarships that was announced, and I don't even have a number, but it was a huge amount of dollars that the schools had gotten for scholarships, and there were some that was even going to the military. So it was great, and I thanked all the teachers and all the staff people that have really worked hard during the pandemic to get these kids through this year, and I just want to give them a shout-out as well on that. Also, I attended the promotion of the new multies in the police department, and I knew all of them. I won't call them all by name, but they know who they are. Just want to say congratulations to them, and we're looking forward to them continuing to keep our city safe. I would also like to say, Mr. Managing, I don't know if there is anything that we can do about this, but I've received email from a concerned resident about a pool party, and it's called the Wet and Wild. It's going to be hosted, and they charging $20 to $500 to participate. And it says Wet and Wild Pool Party hosted by, I won't call the name. Tickets are $20 in advance at the door. Section of $500 can book, and they got a phone number, VIP parking, and show some wild ladies here on this thing here. And I'm just wondering, do we have any law that can people have these selling parties, pool parties, I guess the best way to put it? They asked me, and I couldn't answer, so I bring it up here.
I might defer to the chief in a minute here, but it sounds like a special event of some sort.
That's what it sound like to me, too.
Chief, you anything with that?
And I do have the address, but I don't want to put it out here.
Yes, sir. We have staff that are already on that and looking into it to see exactly what can be done. We've already made contact as well, and we will be trying to make sure that we ensure that our laws are followed.
Okay, because, you know, we have had some bad incidents happen behind that kind of incident, and this is a nice, heavy, populated neighborhood, and I don't know where they had the parking at because the area that it's in, it's not a public parking area that would place close to it, so.
If you could share what you have with the chief, I'd greatly appreciate.
Okay, I get what you had the chief. Let me make sure you have. But crazy pictures. Anybody want to say, but can't show them on television. But I really hope we can look into that and make sure we stop that before it get out of hand and cause us a problem. I've been going to some of the community meetings and whatnot, and they are very excited about getting the information about the comp plan, and I'm hoping that they will get involved with getting the information back so they will help us get the information that we need to know what they want to see the city look like in the future. So I am passing those out as I go out into the community to make sure that they can't come back, say they didn't have an opportunity to participate in. So I've been working on that. Also, I would just like to say, Ms. Robin Wynn, to her on her leaving the city, I would like to thank her for her service. I think she came in here and did a wonderful job for the employees and the city. She worked hard with trying to improve the, get the comp plan and all through, and I will miss her. I just want to wish her well on her endeavors and her next journey in life that it will be very prosperous, and I will miss her. I wish her well. And I hate to see her leave, but anyway, her resignation is, I think, the last day is Friday. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, so on my behalf to her. Thank you.
I understand we have an emergency announcement from councilperson, Councilman Williams.
I didn't say it was the emergency.
I think it comes with a little.
However, it's not an emergency, but this is worth mentioning. I was looking through my notes, and I forgot this, and I just wanted to let you guys and let the public know that the total scholarship awards for Suffolk City School for this year was $15,145,230. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of the count of money, that scholarship money that was presented to our schools as a whole. So I just thought that was important to know.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I will be brief. There's a lot going on, but I'm going to blow through this pretty quick. I too want to congratulate all the high school graduates. I know 12 years seems like an eternity, but I know the last 12 seconds went pretty close, pretty far, pretty fast for me. As you get older, I think they start flying by a whole lot quicker. I want to congratulate Nansen River Track Team. I think they won a state title recently in outdoor track. I know they had some indoor track titles as well. We had a couple ribbon cuttings and another green clean car wash. I'm not exactly sure what the deal is with the car washes, but every car I see itself needs to be pretty clean right now. So we got another pretty amazing little operations that they have. They're not really what you think of when you think of a car wash in the old sense, if you will. Also, attended the ribbon cutting at Atlantic Constructors off of Carolina Road, and it wasn't long after we did the SS Shore Olive Plant back there. And I'm always amazed, even, you know, I'm the mayor, I'm supposed to have an idea what's going on in the city, but it's amazing how big we are and how much we got going on that I don't know anything about. Those are two fairly significant operations that are tucked away back in the industrial part that are very, very impressive. So I'm glad I got the opportunity to go out there. We had a lot going on with our public safety officers, our police department, and also our fire department. And last, it's been between now and the prior meeting, on June 6, we had a promotional ceremony. There was a lot of folks who got promoted, and there's no need to go through everybody's name, but want to congratulate, you know, Matt McCarley on his promotion to deputy chief. That's pretty significant. We also had a captain, lieutenants, master police officers. I see my buddy saying Sukawaski was on there. I don't know if his dog, did his dog get promoted too at the same time? No? Should have promoted the dog. Forget him. But anyhow, let's see. We also had a badge-pitting ceremony on June 14. We had two new officers, and it's always a good time when you look at this. You got June 6, you get all these folks with some longevity and time and grade and been with us for a long time, and we got, so we got the new and we got the older. So it's a pretty cool transition. I went to Virginia Beach to the Hampton Rose Chamber Valor Awards, and I think both the chiefs were there, Chief Barocke and Chief Chandler, and I think we were probably represented better than any other city there. Matter of fact, they wanted me to get up on stage and just, you know, smile, shake hands, and it's amazing. I went up there, and the guy said, "Boy, you up here again?" And, you know, I just want to mention, we had two firefighters that got lifesaving awards, Corey Stevens and Manuel Franco. We had investigative merit award, Detective Madison Cabell. We had a valor award for Officer Elizabeth May. We had a firefighter valor award, Robert Short. And I'm telling you, Suffolk, we smoked them that night or that afternoon. So it was pretty impressive. Congratulations to all those well-deserved recognition. Let's see here. It's been a long night, been a very long night, but I think it's been a very, very, very productive night. I don't know about you, but I think we got a lot accomplished tonight. We talked about a lot. We got some things. We cleared up some things. We got some other initiatives in motion. I too want to wish Robin Wynn only the best in her future endeavors. I'm sure she'll be successful wherever she goes, and I have enjoyed working with her as much as I have anyone that I can remember lately, or at all for that matter. And I also understand that Councilman Fawcett has a birthday this weekend. Roger, you still there? You got a birthday this weekend?
Yeah, Saturday.
Last Saturday?
No, this Saturday.
This Saturday. Okay, so the city saved the money on that cake. We're not doing that. We'll do the cake when you get back. How about that? But for the meantime, we'll go ahead and reinvest that money for a while. So happy birthday. And with that, I'll go to my quote for the night, and that is from Thomas. Let me make sure I pronounce his name right. Is it Sowell? Or Sowell? S-O-W-E-L-L? Been around a long time. He's an economist and a social commentator. Is that right? Sowell? Something like that. But anyhow, and that quote is, "When you want to help people, you tell them the truth. When you want to help yourself, you tell them what they want to hear." And I think that's a really, really good quote. And with that, unless there's any other further business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, we got movers and shakers. We got a motion by Councilman Goldberg, a second by Councilman Ward. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.